The Tallahassee annual retreat. We have got a full schedule today. It's great to see everybody. So let's go ahead and jump right in. And I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to speak loud into this to make sure everybody can hear us. This is welcome, as you indicated, welcome to everybody that's here. We have a number of folks that are in person, as you can see, but we also have plenty participating virtually via WebEx. That includes staff and members of our public. The meeting also is being broadcast on WCO T to make sure that it's widely available to our public. Each January, this body, the City Commission, comes together to discuss its priorities and provide direction for the upcoming year. And so that's what this day will be filled with. We do have quite a bit of agenda material for your benefit that I'm sure you have reviewed and the public has had access to. We have staff presentations scheduled. We will work to be very brief with those and provide ample opportunity for feedback and open discussion. Before I get too far into my opening comments, I'd like to pause just for a minute. We are in a new facility. I think it will serve us well today. It's a good space, tall ceilings, a good footprint. And this ceiling is managed by our electric and gas department and led by Rob McGarrett, who's our general manager of electric and gas. Rob is on WebEx. And if you don't mind, I'd like to take just a moment, he's our host, to have him welcome us and tell us just a little bit about this facility.
Thank you, Reese. Mayor and commissioners, as Reese indicated, he wanted us to share a little bit of information about the facility. We do welcome you to the electric and gas logistics facility. The need for this facility was born out of our experiences with Hurricanes Hermine, Irma, and Michael. We found ourselves during those, at least during Hermine and Michael, with a significant mutual aid support group coming into Tallahassee that we needed to feed and care for while they were here. So for example, during Michael, we were feeding over 800 people breakfast every morning, and they ended up having to sit on the back of their trucks or stand at their trucks and eat. And we really didn't have a good place to do that catering operation and feeding and logistics operation. And so that was how the concept for this building came to be. On the outside of the building, we have a covered catering area where the storm caterer we use can set up to store their food and do all their food prep. There's a prep kitchen where they can do the meal preparation and the handling of the food. But then in the room you're in, we can seat about 380 people for a meal. And when you couple that with the transmission warehouse that's right next door to this facility, we can seat about 500 people at a time to feed them. It also gives us the opportunity to do the safety briefings and the work briefings that we have to do out of the elements and in an area where folks can all hear and see what's going on. Out there, while it's designed primarily for storm season, clearly it provides us the ability to have larger team meetings, events like this one today, safety meetings, and other activities that we need to conduct our business within the utility. That's sort of the background. We're glad to have you all here today. We're glad we're able to host the retreat, and we're available for any questions you might have.
Thanks, Rob. Mayor and commissioners, I think this is a perfect use of this facility, though obviously we're trying to be COVID sensitive. We're all spaced out today. And again, as I indicated in my earlier comments, we have members of the public participating via WebEx, and so we've all adapted. And I thought it was a good use, and I appreciate Rob's overview as we find good resource for the facilities we have within the city. On your agenda today, it's divided in largely about three sections. This morning, we have material, about an hour and a half's worth of material, starting with a COVID update, with a discussion of our infrastructure capital plan that will then blend into a discussion of our southern strategy area that's defined in our comprehensive plan. And I think those go together very well. We're looking for your direction on a number of things in that discussion. We've carved out a time beginning at 11:30 for public comment. We have a number of speakers registered via WebEx, and we have some in person, I believe. And so that comment will be in person as well as online. And then finally, the last portion of the day, about an hour and a half worth of, hour and a half worth of work, I believe, using the strategic plan that you adopted about a year ago, kind of as the structure and outline for discussing the priority areas of the City Commission. We'll touch on not all of the 130-plus targets, but maybe about 15%, but certainly open this discussion, I think, to probably be a good framework for the commission to work through its priorities. So that's the agenda for the day. Mayor and commissioners, if you have any questions, we'll take them now. Otherwise, we'll jump right into our presentations.
Anybody have any opening comments for the retreat today? Nope? All right, we'll jump right in. Rob, thank you for hosting us. We certainly appreciate it. It's a beautiful facility. Let me remind my colleagues that this is more of an informal session, so feel free to get my attention if you want to jump in and ask some questions as we go through the presentations and look forward to a great discussion. Mr. Manager, let's move forward.
All right, thanks, sir. We're going to move swiftly. The first portion is a COVID update. That's going to be led by Deputy City Manager Cynthia Barber. She joins us via WebEx. And so I'll turn it over to Cynthia at this time.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners, and all who assembled today. This will be a very brief update. Commissioners, you have a full packet of information regarding the COVID update, but just to take a real quick look back, you will recall approximately 11 months ago or so, we came together with a number of community leaders to address their protect or for being impacted by COVID. We talked about the resources that we have as a community, how we could leverage those resources collectively, and how we could communicate with our public to make sure that we were adequately addressing COVID. Shortly after that meeting, we started to see our first cases in the county. At that point, and to this date, the priority has been to maintain the safety and welfare of the public and of our employees, and also to maintain continuity of services. You know, and I'd like for, just to remind the public, that throughout this process, we have continued to do that. We've not had any interruption in service today. So I think that that's a great feat, given all that we've been challenged by with COVID, that our employees have stepped up and done the job that we really expect for them to do and continue to serve our public. As we started to see the impacts of COVID on our community at your direction and your leadership, we stepped up and provided financial support to, not only to citizens and to businesses, but also to nonprofits. So today, what's happening? Now, another thing I think, too, that I'd like to just mention, we helped to stand up the very first mobile testing site, a huge operation at the Northwood Center site for TMH, which got the initial work of being tested done in our community initiated. In terms of vaccinations, I want to give you a real brief update on that. As you know, we don't lead the efforts relating to vaccinations, but we have served a role. Our fire department, and I have heard, and I think you have also heard, that the fire department is doing a tremendous job assisting with the vaccinations in our community. They've created, with the Department of Health, they've created a model that could be replicated across this country. We also believe it to be one that's scalable. Our city manager has pledged full support to the Department of Health that they need us, not only as it relates to the work that the fire department is currently doing, but if there's a need for other type services in terms of helping with administrative type activities, we've placed our full support to get the vaccinations done in our community. As it relates to COVID, the one thing we will be seeking direction on today is related to our special events. You will recall that we suspended those operations based upon CDC guidelines and the executive order of the governor. We are asking your direction today on potentially reinstituting those activities. We have some of the big ones that we do in the spring, like Springtime Tallahassee Parade and some of the other large festivals. If we are going to do them, we're about at the point where those organizations would need to start planning. It would be our recommendation, should you direct us to implement those activities, that we would do it in a way that's cognitive of the fact that we are still in dealing with COVID. So we'd ask that the activities we implemented with the COVID plan, we would have a team of cross-functional city employees, very similar to what we did when we started to reopen some of the entertainment centers in our community that led by Ashley Edwards. They would, Ashley Edwards in the Parks and Recreation Department, they would evaluate the COVID plan, just making sure that it adequately addressed the safety of our community so that we don't implement activities that can, again, contribute to the spread of COVID. So in addition to all of the information that we are providing in the document today related to COVID, we are seeking your direction. And unless you have questions for me, that concludes my overview.
Reese, as you know, on Monday, I called a meeting of our community partners as well, especially those that are actively participating in the vaccination of our community. Any follow-up comments you'd like to make based on that meeting and how we're moving forward as a community?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to say, and Cynthia touched on it, we are in a supportive posture, clearly not being the lead in the distribution of vaccine. Frankly, the state of Florida is. That works down through the Leon County Department of Health, which is an arm of the state of Florida. We have pledged our support. We are exercising that support. Yesterday, nearly 1,000 individuals were vaccinated at our fire station on Apple Yard and Pensacola Street. We know, though, that we have to scale the capacity. That's an obvious thing, to ultimately get as many people in our community vaccinated as possible. I will tell you that we are involved in those discussions, again, providing support where we can, providing help, resources, guidance. Ultimately, I think that our TMH will be heavily involved. And there's other discussions going on at the state level in terms of regional type testing facilities. I think that it's very fluid. The process is working today, but again, it has to scale, and we stand ready to help in every way.
Good. Colleagues, I want you to know that I also stressed, probably much like your offices, we've received a lot of concerns from citizens about the lack of information that's been flowing out of the Department of Health in the county health department. You know, what exactly is the plan moving forward with the vaccinations? Who are the players that will be doing vaccinations? What is the supporting role of all the other community partners? It was a good meeting. We have pledged to stay in touch on a regular basis to make sure that we are maximizing all of our resources and we are properly communicated, not only between ourselves, but also with the public in regards to COVID. And I will say that over the past year, I think our community has really risen to the occasion, has really kind of set the example in many, many ways. Reese, kudos to the entire team working with TMH. The drive-through testing facility was recognized on a state level and on a national level for its excellence. Other communities I know were calling you, asking, how did you do this and how did we move forward? And I think the team did a really good job. We've got a lot of work to do. We've still got a long ways to go, but thank you. And I'm proud of the community for stepping up, wearing our masks, and following the CDC guidelines.
Mr. Mayor, you reminded me, if you don't mind, if I could say as well what you said about communication. I do believe there's a lot of focus on the logistical efforts of distributing the vaccine, which is appropriate at this moment, given the amount of doses available. But what we've seen already, and we've seen it anecdotally, and I think we're starting to see it in some of the data bearing out, that it will be very, very important for us to communicate as organizations, collectively as a community, to all of our citizens to make sure that they are well-informed, that they can be comforted in the science of the vaccine, but they also know how to participate in the vaccination process. I think that will probably, as the months go on, be one of the most important things we do. And it would be my intention to bring you back a plan for how I think we should participate as early as our next City Commission meeting. We're talking about that internally, but I think, again, as we move forward, I think that's going to be really important to our ultimate success.
Excellent. Yeah, Commissioner Richardson and Commissioner Porter.
Thank you. I think that we should also emphasize to the public that even though the vaccine is being administered, there is still an absolute need for us to practice those CDC guidelines, the mask, the hand washing, the social distancing, because I think some people are getting relaxed, thinking that the vaccine is the be-all, end-all at this point, and we just don't know at this point. So I think even those people who have gotten the vaccine, it is in their best interest for the time being to still practice those CDC guidelines.
Well, thank you. Commissioner Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering how much information the Department of Health is sharing with us about where the vaccinations are taking place, kind of, I mean, I know just progress in general, but specifically, so we know where to target our messaging, or, you know, what's the flow of communication like with them?
I think the best way to describe it is developing. I think that's kind of what's happening today, is the logistics are being worked out, identifying methods of increasing the capacity. That's developing. The information that honestly, that we have is exactly what the public has available to it as well on the Florida Department of Health's website. So there's a lot of macro-level data that we're tracking. We do know what's happening at our fire station, of course, but the vaccine is being distributed pretty broadly around the community. Some physicians are distributing it. We know it's, well, we've all read in the paper about other institutions that are distributing it as well. So I think we're paying attention to all sources, and I think that kind of communication, that clearinghouse of information is still being developed.
Okay. And I'm glad you brought up coming back to us with the messaging plan, because I had some questions about that, and I think we definitely need to be doing that and making sure that we're reaching all kinds of people. Is now the time to ask about the events?
Sure.
Okay. I was just curious, you know, where Ashley's staff, what they're thinking, I mean, have we, I assume, have we communicated with those large events? And do they want to host their events? They want to move forward, I assume?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. And I certainly would love for Cynthia and Ashley, Cynthia Barber, Deputy City Manager, and Ashley Edwards, our Parks and Recreation Director, to comment. They've been heavily engaged with the organizations and the thought process around how we can move forward, if you would like, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
And I'll let Ashley share the details, but yes, we have been in contact with some of the organizers, and they are eager, in many cases, to get started. Ashley, I'd like for you to share some of the detail of that, but also your thoughts on how we might be able to assist in the decisions that go forward.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager. Yes, ma'am, we have been in communication with all of the major events. They have been independently working on potential COVID safety plans, and they've been doing a lot of creative thinking about how they could safely hold their events. They won't look like they have in the past necessarily, but they all understand that there is a balance to be had between being able to provide the event in a way that's safe and still accessible to the public. Our role would be to simply help them evaluate those plans, talk about what logistically would work and would not work alongside of coordinating the city services that would be required as part of their event footprint to help ensure and make sure that all those pieces could be put into place safely. They, many of them are, especially some of the larger events that are considered sport events, have guidelines that are in place by their national federations and national governing bodies that will help guide them. And of course, our event staff is very seasoned and experienced in, you know, looking at the logistics of their plans, and we're familiar with so many of these events, they've happened from year to year. We know where the, we think the pressure points are in terms of things that need to be addressed. And again, between the creativity of our staff and the event organizers themselves, I feel like that most of them have pretty good plans, potential plans, to be able to, again, not like we're used to seeing, but to be able to put on an event that would still be very enjoyable to the public.
Thank you. Do you have, could you list some of the guidelines? I'm just very, I'm very nervous about it, and I want to see events continue. I'm just curious if you could give me a little bit more detail about what our expectations would be as the city and the different kinds of events, because I know that we're talking about rental facilities, and there's a lot that goes into kind of, it could be a tiered approach as to how we allow events, you know, what kinds of events we allow to continue and the use of our facilities. Could you provide a little bit more information?
Certainly. Obviously, one of the major considerations is going to have to be the ability for these events to provide for social distancing, mask-wearing, all of the things that we know are important to help prevent the potential spread of the virus. I think one of the biggest pieces of this is going to be how they're going to handle the people that would come and attend these events. Will they have spectators if they're a competition-style event? Will they not? If they're events that typically bring, you know, large numbers of people together in a park, how will they manage that? How will they allow for social distancing, mandate social distancing? And those are the types of details that we would have to be very considerate of. The facility rentals, obviously, we're talking today about the outdoor facilities that we have, like the ballfields, tennis courts for, you know, some of the large tournaments, like the Challenger Tennis Tournament. Obviously, the use of our park space, Cascades Park and Tom Brown Park and the downtown chain of parks, those are the three most popular areas for these types of events. So, and each event is very unique and very different, and will have different requirements and different circumstances that have to be addressed. But the major situation is going to be is if we're bringing people together, we know that that's a concern. We have to be cognizant of how many people we're encouraging to come and how we're going to manage them in a way that people can remain safe and socially distant. And that, and again, that's not going to mean that they're going to be able to do things the way that they have always done them. So working with them to figure out how to do that is really key. And I can give you, you know, just a couple of quick examples. Some of the events that are in the chain of parks, while they would still be free and open to public, we may have to institute almost like a ticket option where you would reserve a block of time. So instead of having thousands of people in the chain of parks looking at exhibits or booths, we might have to manage that by people signing up for a certain time period of blocks so that we can limit the number of people that are in that space at one time. You've seen the creative way that our own city is putting on the Martin Luther King Day reverse parade. That's an option for other parades. So there's tricks of the trade out there that we can look at in a case-by-case basis with each of these events, and they all have different situations and different needs.
I'm not sure we intended to limit it to that, but I think practically, I think all the events that we're talking about are outdoors.
Okay, thank you. And one just follow-up question, maybe for Cynthia, just about the vaccines. I've seen some churches, and I know there's that, the working group that, unaffiliated, I believe, with the city that's working on reaching minority populations. Are we doing anything else to either monitor, monitor kind of the demographic and racial socioeconomic breakdown of where, I know that there are the state guidelines, and there's all kinds of priorities that we need to be thinking about, but just because of kind of the concern there is about it not getting to certain populations, do we have a plan for that? Or, I know there are some partners, could you identify those?
I know that we're working on some communication strategies, because there is a recognition of making sure that there's participation throughout the community. So I know we're working on a couple of ideas of how we can reach the minority communities, mostly because we've heard a lot of apprehension and concern about the vaccine. I don't, we don't have a particular contract that's underway right now, but we are looking at working with some of the radio stations and groups that appeal more to the minority community. Allison, I don't know if Allison's on the call, if Allison's there, she has anything more specific, but we do recognize that that is a concern. And how can we, not just in just simple messaging, but are there examples in the community of minorities, of men, that minority men in particular, who have some historic concerns about vaccinations? Is there a way to have a group of people work together to specifically reach out to them? Then there's the age groups of folks who have concern about it. Is there a way to do that? But we don't have a specific contract underway yet, but we do realize that it is an area of concern, and we are working to address that.
Mr. Mayor? I got Mayor Pro Tim Matlow, and then Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to be clear, we, in this pandemic, I think we're finally at a point where we may, it looks like we can see a finish line with the vaccine coming out, but we're not quite there yet. And the situation we're in right now is positivity rates are over 10%, and recommendations are over 5%. We should essentially be on lockdown. So I think we need to tread very cautiously with events, and I think it's one thing to talk about a smaller event that may take place at a tennis tournament with a couple players, if you could easily separate how many people are attending and how many people are spectators versus a very large-scale event like a parade that draws tens of thousands of people, which I think is just, the situation we're in right now, that's an absolute no-go to bring that many people. So my concern about, and I appreciate, actually, the details, getting into some of the nitty gritty of how this could work, but my concern is, if you have a large event in a public space, we can't necessarily control how many people are going to show up. So we may have a ticket line, but we may have 500 or 1,000 people trying to get in that ticket line, and then they're already gathered. So how do you account for that? So I'm looking at the largest events that we know bring thousands and thousands and thousands of people, and I would ask them to reconsider planning anything that could draw that type of crowd. What we're doing for the Martin Luther King Parade makes sense, because we're setting up, and we can space it out, and everybody else will be in vehicles. I think that's, that was very clever. I think that was a fantastic idea to be able to celebrate the season but recognize the position, right? But I can't support, and I could support if these COVID plans come back to us and we know exactly what we're talking about and how many people will be in attendance, but with the information we have right now, I can't potentially vote for something that could bring 5,000 people downtown at the same time, and I know what it's going to look like. Thank you.
Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things. You know, one of the things that I have been frequently involved with since this pandemic started is the food distribution with Second Harvest and Farm Share. And we have a lot of people who come through those lines, and they ask for additional food items because they have neighbors who are either elderly, disabled, don't have transportation. And I'm worried that that same situation may exist for the vaccine, that there are people out there, because there are a lot of our senior citizens who are totally isolated. They may not be getting information and certainly don't have transportation to these testing sites. So whatever we can do to coordinate with the Senior Citizens Center, maybe other organizations that work with senior citizens to maybe provide transportation for those individuals to get to the vaccine sites, because it may be, it may not be that they don't want the vaccine, they just don't have the transportation to get there. So whatever we can do in that regard to provide transportation, maybe through our Star Metro, one of our transportation alternatives. the Star Metro, one of our transportation alternatives through Star Metro to help provide that transportation as well. With respect to the African-American community, maybe the minority community generally, I think it's incumbent upon us to demonstrate, as Reverend Holmes did and some others have done, very publicly, taking the vaccine. I plan to do it as soon as it's available to me. It was interesting, the other day I went to the fire station on Apple Yard. I was there to meet with the, the union president and they thought I was there for the vaccine. And I said, now wait a minute, do I look that old? I'm not 65 yet. No, I'm kidding. But I, but I didn't take it because I didn't want to get ahead of those who were eligible for it, of course. But, but, but it's going to be up to us, who are leaders in the community, to very publicly indicate that we intend to do that and demonstrate it by actually getting the vaccine when it's available to us. And like I said, I certainly plan to do that when it's available to me and to my family. Because one of the, we, I was on a Zoom call the other day with the Tallahassee Lenders Consortium and we had a nurse from the Bond Community Health Center asking questions, answering questions about the vaccinations. And one of the things we talked about with this notion of herd immunity, we've got to have at least 60 to 70% of the population vaccinated in order to achieve this herd immunity that they're talking about. And so, it's going to be incumbent upon all of us, regardless of ethnic background, race, political party, that we get to that 60 to 70% so that we can achieve that herd immunity. And as you all saw the other day, my church was one of the first in the Bethel A M E, in the community to become a vaccination site. And we're hoping that that will continue because that will make, as FAMU has done for those in the community for testing, that we have sites like that. I'm hoping that FAMU eventually will become a vaccination site as Bethel A M E was. So, there are lots of things that we can do to encourage people regardless of where they live, their ethnic or racial background, to take this vaccination and the importance of that for health reasons, but also to reach that 60, 70%. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Commissioner William Scotts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
One of the things that I've been doing is pushing for FAMU to become one of those vaccination sites, because FAMU has shown that it is a great community asset when it comes to testing. It's in a trusted location. It's being run very efficiently and organized. I've stood in that line myself and at least twice with my family and once by myself. And once you stand in line with folks, you become family. And the results are back quickly. And I think that the next step is to take you to the vaccination step. And I have been using my voice to raise that issue. I'm hoping that all others will do the same because I believe that you already have something in place that could help us do some mass vaccinations, and I think that we need to really push for that. And the fact that it's located on the south side of town would also be a convenient spot for folks to be able to get there to get, to get the vaccination. There are other locations in town that could be looked at as well. And I think that, you know, I think I saw, saw in the news last night or this morning, they're going to begin to mass push out the vaccine because they've been holding back. But now they're getting ready to push it out because as Dr. Fauci, you know, y'all know, I believe in Dr. Fauci. Dr. Fauci said that instead of having it in a freezer somewhere, getting freezer burn, it needs to be in an arm. And so, they're beginning to push it out. So, what I've heard locally is that some of the issues has been the availability of the number of vaccines needed. Kudos to Bethel A M E, but in order to get to Bethel A M E, you had to go through Bethel Baptist to make an appointment. So, let's, let's just make sure we give kudos to all the Bethels and all the people who made this happen. But even with that, they only had 500 doses.
Yeah.
So, that was not enough, but it, you know, it did what it did for that moment in time. But I'm looking forward to when the communities, our communities will be flooded with the vaccine and those who want it will be able to get it. I do want it. I'm not 65 and I'm not a healthcare provider, but I will tell you that my son is and my daughter-in-law is and my sister are providers, and they have all received their vaccination. My son received his second one and he's a big ex-football player and he is fine. He, you know, he's probably still think he can play. So, that did not damper anything that he was doing. And my daughter-in-law, the nurse practitioner, took her first one on this week. So, it works, it's working. We have nothing to fear but fear itself. And as far as I'm concerned, I'd rather take the vaccine than to get COVID and wait to get COVID. For someone to decide whether there's an ICU bed available for me when I could, I could try to head this off. I took immunization for measles and mumps and chickenpox and flu. This is what we've been praying for, so we just need to go ahead and get it done. And so, I, my arm is extended, either arm, it doesn't matter. When, when the time comes, I'm ready to take the vaccine. And again, I'm pushing for a facility such as Florida A and M, the Northwood Center, Governor's Square Mall, places where people can drive up and get their vaccine without a whole lot of fuss. I was very disheartened to see what happened the first day this rolled out. And I have a couple of friends there. I'm sending everywhere I can think of and I hear about to try to get theirs. They got the Bethel A M E a little too late the other day, and so they weren't able to get, get theirs. But we've got to make sure that we're not rationing this vaccine out and that we're, we're distributing it equitably to everyone who wants it because we've, we've got to just do this so that we can return to activities. And we won't ever be like we used to be, but we're going to be in a new normal. And I am in favor of looking at ways to, to resume some of these, some of our activities, our events in a COVID-friendly environment. Kudos to Reese Gold, Cynthia Barber, Angela Hendrick and her staff on the Martin Luther King Day Parade. How fitting is it that our first parade will be out-of-the-box, cutting-edge parade that is happening during a pandemic? I was worried that the pandemic was going to stop us, but Reese said, no, 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 this is a creative group, let's let them work. And so, they worked and I'm very proud of what we're about to do on Monday. And so, I'm in favor of looking at ways to have events very COVID-friendly. In case you didn't know, we welcome about 40,000 people to town during the week of the football state championships. And I haven't heard of any, any, any major thing happening and they put their system in place and it worked. So, we can do anything if we want to and we want to do it hard enough. So, I'm, I'm in favor of listening and hearing how we can make this happen because our community has to come back together at some point in time. We're all at our wit's end. We're screaming at one another, we're yelling at one another, we're doing all kinds of things because we don't have outlets. And so, we, we've got to get rid of some of this pent-up frustration somewhere in a productive way, and I think that we can figure out how to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Mayor, let's move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With respect to a vote on the events, I would ask you to reserve that to the end of your meeting. Obviously, you want to take public comment that occurs in the middle of the day. So, we'll, we'll shift gears and move to our next segment of the agenda.
Let me jump in from logistics standpoint, too. So, what I would love is for you all, for staff, to kind of keep track of all the staff recommendations that you'd like for us to consider for a formal motion. So, after we have public comment this afternoon, you can walk us through. And I'm sure there might be other motions throughout, you know, based on conversations throughout the course of the day, but at least start us off the foundation or else we're going to forget every motion that you're looking for, for staff recommendations.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Let's shift gears. We'll move to our infrastructure discussion. Then again, we'll move right into a Southern Strategy area discussion. That's going to be led by our Assistant City Manager, Wayne Tetter, and a number of folks working under his direction. I'd ask for him to introduce those individuals and we'll come in and out this presentation. We want to make sure we cover enough ground. We're not going to go too long, but it is a little more in-depth than our COVID presentation. So, I'll turn it over to Mr. Tetter.
All right. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Good to be here this morning. While Renetta's loading up her, getting the screen shared, let me just start off, say, our Underground Utilities Public Infrastructure General Manager, Ms. Renetta Curry-Marshall. She will help you visualize what you have in your agenda materials and just how impactful our, our public investment, infrastructure investment is in our community and is throughout all parts of our community. Immediately following that, we will transition into our South Side update. Those efforts are going to be led by Devin Levens of the Planning Department, and hopefully that will begin initiating the conversation with you all from a policy direction. We certainly have ideas in our agenda material on how we wish to proceed moving forward, but this is your time to tell us if we're on the right track or some additional things that you want us to cover as we move forward. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Marshall.
Thank you, AC. I'm Tetter. I am now sharing my screen. Can you see my screen okay? Hello?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Good morning. It's my pleasure to give you a brief executive-level summary of the investments that have been made by the city on some of our, our public infrastructure projects. And this will be a brief overview. You're going to note through the presentation that these projects span the gambit from utilities, water, sewers, stormwater, energy and gas, to transportation, including both roadways and sidewalks, as well as community facilities. Now, while these projects may be diverse, they share a common goal in providing and enhancing core services for our citizens and customers, and that directly affects the quality of life of our community. So, we're going to talk about some of the major projects that were completed for fiscal year 2020, so doing a retrospective. We're going to look at continued progress for this fiscal year, and there's over 150 projects that were identified in your agenda packet that equate to almost $140 million of investments. And then over the next, the next five fiscal years, that's over $800 million of investments when we're talking about public infrastructure. I'm going to start with, with water and sewer. And I thought showing this geospatially will give you, you know, a pretty good idea as far as where these projects are located throughout, throughout the city. Now, these were water and sewer projects that were completed the last fiscal year. So, the slide shows you a number of projects, and what this slide represents is almost eight miles of sewer lines that were replaced, upgraded or extended. And in addition, there were approximately five miles of water main that were replaced or upgraded. Now, these projects ensure system reliability and redundancy during emergency events, as well as provide increased capacity for future growth and increased operational flexibility. As we turn to the next five fiscal years and we look at that, you'll note again that the projects are throughout the city as well as in the Woodville area, replacing water mains that are there. Not, not only are these linear projects, but also included is the construction of a new elevated tank, the northwest tank right there, a new well that's also in the north. Now, these projects are also going to ensure system reliability, and they're also going to provide for future growth demands and improved fire protection in the northwest area. Okay. Now, I'm now turning towards our stormwater projects that were completed in 2020. Several of these strategic projects address the trifecta of reducing flooding, replacing aging infrastructure and improving water quality. One of the ones that I would like to highlight is the central drainage ditch right here. That's the project right there. I'm highlighting that project because that was a major project. That's one of our major, our major ditches. 4,500 feet of gabion line ditch, we reduced erosion, which helps to improve water quality to Lake Munson. And that project also, also won an American Public Works Association Project of the Year And as we look to the next five fiscal year, these are projects that are going to be underway. One of those projects that the Commission is familiar with is the Market District Multipurpose Project. That addresses stormwater. It also addresses transportation and utilities. Our staff has been working very hard on that, working with Blueprint on this project. And again, the goals are improved, one of the goals is improving water quality, in this case, Lake Jackson. And I think I would be remiss if I did not mention that we're undertaking a community-wide surface water master plan. Everyone recognizes the vital role that stormwater plays as far as water quality is concerned in our community. This master plan is going to take a holistic, community-wide look. It's going to be based on sound science, data and engineering, and it's going to allow the city to move, move forward efficiently, effectively, when we're talking about improving the quality of our surface water resources. Okay, now I'm turning from, from utilities, from water utilities to community facilities. And here you see five of our major community facilities, which the Commission is very familiar with. The second senior center that's going to be located in the Canopy Development, that's going to help address the needs of a growing senior community. The TPD headquarters at the former Northwood Mall, new fire station number 17, and a community resilience center that's located at Lake Bradford Road. We're expanding our municipal services complex right here on Jackson Bluff to the property that's right next to you, the old rose-printing building. And last but not least, the new Southeast Park. Turning to energy and gas, our, our, our energy, our electric and gas department does a fantastic job on strategic investments, as well as new, new, new development and what have you to support growth, aging infrastructure, the whole gambit there. You see here, this particular project, Fifth Reciprocating Engine and Hopkins Unit Two, as well as rebuilding transmission line 31N and 33. This is addressing aging infrastructure, putting more efficient units on, putting more efficient units online, as well as storm hardening. Turning here now to sidewalks. One of the goals that was said that the Commission is familiar with is 10 new sidewalk projects to be completed. That was a lofty goal that was set for 2020, and I'm proud to say that those, those sidewalks, we didn't meet that goal, those sidewalks were completed. What you see here are sidewalks throughout the city, and what this represents is almost 20,000 feet or nearly four miles of sidewalk projects. These were 10 projects and four of those address safe routes to schools. As we look at this current fiscal year, again, these are the projects that we have identified to be completed for fiscal year 21. These are 11 projects totaling almost 18,000 feet or three and a half miles. And as you can see, these projects are also throughout the city. Now, I'm going to turn towards, towards roadways. Very proud of this achievement as we look at the last fiscal year. This includes both new roadways, and we have talked about the Weems Road Extension, Weems Road Pass projects, which is seen right here, but also all throughout. It's not just a matter of new roadways, but preserving and maintaining, enhancing those roadways that you have. So, so what you see there is road resurfacing projects, and what this equated to was, was over 50 miles of lane miles that were resurfaced for fiscal year 2020. And as we look at fiscal year 21, again, I think this really helps to display where these projects are, that they are throughout the city. And so, for our goal for fiscal year 21 is to resurface over 54 miles of lanes, of roadway miles. And also in this, it also includes some pass projects, pedestrian and street safety right here on the, and the Commission is familiar with this project, Silas Street Pass Project, which is going to enclose, you know, steep ditches, going to put sidewalks in and just make that a better situation. So, in closing, as we take a look at all of these, all of these projects, I didn't put the titles on here because I would have been too busy, but these are the, not the entirety, these are the, the major ones that I, that I, that I went over all throughout the city, whether it's roads, whether it's utilities, water, sewer, stormwater, electric gas, the community facilities. You can see from this, I think this depicts that there's a lot going on as far as public infrastructure, projects, investments are concerned. And to take it from another vantage point, that's the city limit. And so, you can see the enormity of the number of infrastructure projects, investments are concerned. And to take it from another vantage point, that's the city limits. And so you can see the enormity of the number of projects that are happening within the city limits and as far, and as well as some of those that are outside. So that, that is a quick auctioneer's perspective of public infrastructure from last year, as well as we go forward. And I'm going to turn it back over to ACM Tedder. Thank you.
Good job, Renetta. Mayor and Commissioners, before we pull down the slides, well, we've pulled it down. Are there any questions that you have regarding?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I had a question on the, on the sewer collection system. And just, can we get an update on just how many miles or percentage of our sewer collection system is still relying on the old clay pipes versus what's been updated?
Yes, we can, we can get you that. I don't have that off the top of my head, Commissioner, but we certainly can get you that information.
Would you happen to know how much, do we have any idea how much stormwater infiltrates into our sewer system?
We are currently doing, well, we have completed an INI, which is basically an infiltration and inflow study. And what we did is we compared a rainy season to, I'll call it a dry season, to try to get a, to try to get a level as far as, as far as INI is concerned. And, and that, that varies depending on the rainy to, to the, to the dry. So there's not a precise number, but what I can say is that in looking at that, looking at that data, where the city compares as, as far as what, what would be considered extreme or what would be considered, I'll call it more marginal or low, we're, we're more on the lower end. And I will also say that, that as we have invested in the system, that level of INI has been reduced over the number of years, over at least like the last, last 10 years, because we've invested in the system, have, have invested in the, the clay pipe as you have, as, as you have identified.
Okay, yeah, just to follow up on that, I, I guess the question I would be asking is trying to identify, if we know how much water is entering into our sewer system, how much, how much does that cost us as our water flows into our sewer, our water accumulation facilities? Is that costing us money over a certain long-term? Is there more benefit to be more aggressive in how we replace some, some of our pipes? And then I guess the other question will be exfiltration. Is there any sewage leakage from these pipes into our soil? And my last question, just along that, Wayne, could you just give us an update? We, we've heard a lot from citizen input over the past year about the consent order as related to our under sewer and FDIP. Can you just tell us where we are on that? And if anywhere in our strategic plan, where we fit it to get out of a consent order and where we go moving forward?
Renetta is the most important and appropriate person to respond to that question. Commissioner.
Okay. Thank you, ACM Tedder. Where we are in the consent order, the consent order was, going from memory here, 2009, and it was later amended, I believe in 2011. And it addressed, the, the city was having a history of sanitary sewer overflows. And that was the impetus for the consent order. Over the last, over the last years, the city has invested major, major dollars in improving our, our sanitary sewer collection system, as well as doing, going from reactive to proactive maintenance. So it wasn't just a matter of investments in the system, it was also a, a matter of implementing programs, maintenance programs, TV and programs of our collection system. The consent order is ending, and someone will probably text me if I'm incorrect, it's ending in, at the end of 2021, is the end of the system, is the end of the consent order. And there are improvements or, or measures that the city is implementing right now. And some of those are in regards to, to the clay system, Commissioner, that, that you had mentioned. And so those are underway as we speak. There are, I have the information, there's approximately 300 miles of, of, of the clay system that still is within our, still is within our system. But we also, I, I must also say that even though that it is clay, doesn't mean that it is a source of INI. We could have clay that is in our system that was constructed correctly, that is still doing, that is still doing well. So we have TV the clay system at least, at least two or three times. And we go there and we look for structural, structural defects that are there. And that low hanging fruit that we find, we go in and, and we take care of as far as with the investments are, are repairing, relining, replacing, whatever that might be.
Great. And thank you for all the information and your hard work on this issue. I know a little bit in the weeds, but when we get into the strategic plan conversation and we're looking at expanding, well, we've already expanded our, our urban infrastructure environment to thousands and thousands more acres to make sure we're looking historically at the areas that still have these kind of antiquated, antiquated, and we're, we're antiquated. Thank you, sir. Antiquated pipes and make sure, as we talk about the strategic plan, like, we have an end goal of when all of that's going to be updated.
Any other questions or comments?
A couple of questions. One is, Renetta, can you give me an update or give us an update on the remediation of the flooding in the Jake Gaither neighborhood, particularly the golf course and the area around Wheatley Road?
Yes, Commissioner, I think I'm going to, I'm going to turn, I believe we have our stormwater manager on, online. And I'm going to turn, if Jody is on, turn to him and he will be able to give you an update, as better than I can. Jody, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Hey, thank you, Commissioner. Yes, sir. We've made some good progress out through there. What we focus on a lot of areas, you know, that's a lower lying part of town, is to mitigate any flood damages. And just a couple of years ago, we received records amount of rainfall amounts, and we had zero flooding in homes in that part of our community. We have implemented a lot of flood reduction in that area. And now we're focused on improving some of the water quality in the area.
Commissioner Richardson, before you move forward, can I, can I jump?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Mr. Manager, remember, we went down and looked at Silver Lake directly connected with this whole flooding issue. And I know that y'all were looking at the capacity of Silver Lake to see if we can expand it, be able to take on more water as part of the flow all the way south. While we were down there as well, remember, we also looked at the park area right there at Silver Lake, specifically the dock that has public access. And I just want to get that back on your radar as we move forward with parks and recreation. And as we're doing improvements, that, that is a priority as well. We got a lot of citizens that like to fish off that dock. It's a great recreational area. And as we're doing the work around Silver Lake, let's keep that park in particular also front and center on the radar. Commissioner Richardson, sorry for jumping into what you were talking about.
Speaking of parks, I want to, I want to commend Ashley and her staff for the work that they have done at Jake Gaither Golf Course.
Yes.
With the cart trail and improvements that they've made. And we just invite everybody to come out now. If you're interested in, I don't play golf, but if you're interested in some nine-hole golf, Jake Gaither is the place to be right now. So Ashley, thank you and your staff for what you've done there. The only, the other question that I had, and I've gotten, I've gotten questions from the neighbors, is the sidewalk on Bluntstown Highway near Nakoma Court. I know that Ray Akbar is listening this morning. And so I told him I would get an answer for him and his neighbors about when we can expect that project to be completed.
Steve? I'm going to turn it over to.
I believe it is. Our Assistant General Manager of Underground Utilities, that's who Renetta is seeking input from. It is one of the listed projects in 2021. Steve Schaefer can provide a little more detail, I think, if he's available.
Yes, he's available.
Yeah. Thank you, City Manager. And thank you, Commissioner, for the question. We, we expect to begin construction on that project by the end of February or early March at the latest right now.
Thank you very much. That's going to be a tremendous amenity to, to that community. At one point, my daughter attended Creative Preschool, which is in the area. And so I used to drive Bluntstown Highway to work when I was working in Gaston County. And I always noticed the walking path along Bluntstown Highway in that area and knew that apparently there was a need for a sidewalk. So they're excited to know that this project is going to be completed and, and was just interested in knowing when we would get started on the project. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, for that.
Thank you, Commissioner. I, I think you brought this up probably last year or thereabouts. And kudos to staff. I know they've been creative. I believe there might even be some state grant money in the funding of this, but certainly appreciate their diligence in getting this on the, on the schedule.
Curtis, you've been a leader on this one, man. Good job.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. William Scotts?
I wanted to just pile on and say, great job in the mitigation of the stormwater down on, around Jake Gaither and Silver Lake. I know that when I first came to the commission, I had an opportunity to tour after it had been a lot of rainfall. And there was a lot of, you know, there were streets that were closed off that you couldn't get through because of that. And there was also a lot of trash that I saw down there as well. So I, I'm, I'm hoping that in fact that we've mitigated the stormwater, that we've also eliminated the trash that was being swept up in, into that area as well. And I kind of followed that, that trash around to Lake Anita. I think that's, that's out off of, is it Spring Hill Road? It's, it's out that way. So I'm hoping that beautiful waterways, you know, leading in, in, down there, just hoping that we're making sure that we keep it clean. I know we're asking residents to help us keep it clean, but when we check and it's not clean, I'm hoping that we're able to get in there and get it clean because we want to make sure that, that we keep the waterways that's flowing that way, keep them, keep them clean and keep them pure. Because like, like the mayor said, you know, recreation is, is happening there. People go there to fish and to just get out of the house. So we want to make sure that we, we're presenting good, clean waterways throughout our city and throughout our, our water, water system. Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, if I could add, so Renetta's team and, and Renetta herself have actually have a, a citizen group down in that part of the community that they are actively working with. I know they, the last time they met was around Thanksgiving. They keep identifying issues and staff keeps coming back and saying, these are how we can address some of the things. Or in some instances, you know, water runs downhill. So it's a tough issue to deal with, but Renetta's team has been committed to working with them to try to find solutions where they can be found.
No, Wayne, in most instances, water goes downhill. It takes stuff with it, too.
You're doing a great job.
Yes.
Job. We really appreciate everything that you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely.
Excellent. Wayne, you want to keep going?
All right. So Devin, if you'll start sharing your presentation, I'll kind of start off. So this is a South Side update. We are required by the comprehensive plan to do this every three years. We've had policies in our comprehensive plan for over 20 years now. It really talks about how to counterbalance the growth that we have, that was occurring in the early 90s, that kept spreading out to the northeast part of our community and trying to bring some of that growth and development and quality of life back to the south part of our community. This is an excellent opportunity for you. We have identified in our agenda item a tentative schedule and process and policy issues that we would like to address as we're moving forward with this new update. This would be your opportunity to give us some feedback and give us some direction of what you want us to look at as well, and to make sure that we're on the right track and, and we're doing the things that you're asking us to do. So with that, Devin, you can take it over from here. We can't hear you, Devin.
Thank you, unmute, Devin.
Sorry, it wouldn't let me unmute, guys. Thanks, ACM Tedder. Commissioner, Mayor, it's good to see you again. Glad to be back with another, another opportunity in our community here to share some stuff with you about what's going on on the South Side. Just to get started here, we got, I gotta go back a few in the slides because I was, I was trying to unmute it. I got way off key. So the purpose of the SSA is to help counterbalance some growth. And Wayne talked about this a little bit. And I think the one thing here is your, the complaint requires us to bring you back every three years, an update. So we're wanting to get that started and find out what the best way to move forward with this update is. You have been provided a lot of information and data. I don't want to go through every little piece of that, but I do want to hit some of the highlights and just make sure that we get some stuff across here. First, I want to start with the SSA boundary. As you can see, this is a pretty large area of the South Side of our community. It actually is about 22.4 square miles. To put that in perspective for you, 22.4 square miles is about 25% of the city limits. Now, you're probably seeing on the screen the 20% county jurisdiction. If we break this down a little bit further and look a little bit more into the SSA, that SSA boundary of the 22.4 square miles, it has both city jurisdiction and county jurisdiction. Of that area, 20% of the SSA is within the county. Looking at some of the tools for private investment, we just wanted, you've seen this in your item, but we just wanted to show you that what are some of those tools that really kind of promote private investment for the SSA? Some of those that we see are annexations. You all are familiar with the CRA boundary and what the CRA can do. There's opportunities on this within the area. We have comparison exemption areas. Renetta just went over tons of infrastructure projects, and we also have the airport. One thing to note here, I've dropped in the annexation map on this slide. And you can see that since 1998, there's been quite a bit of annexation into the city limits. And what we tend to notice, if we look at some of those infrastructure projects that Renetta presented, is when you see annexation happen, typically, infrastructure follows that annexation. Some of the key takeaways, just of the whole item, just to kind of make it a little bit simpler here, is we've got some policies, this has been around since 1998. We're looking at just over 20 years. These policies haven't been revisited for many years. And I think that we've had a lot of changes within the South Side and in the SSA itself. So it's, you know, time that we can look at a deep dive for this with the residents and really see what it would take to reevaluate those goals, objectives and policies. For instance, we need to look at our land uses and really see what, you know, what should or should not be located to provide access to parks, fresh food, and how it's connected with our transportation systems, our bike paths, our bike trails, our sidewalks, mass transit, roadways. What are the economic opportunities with the land uses we have? And then most of all, what is it that the community wants to see us focus our efforts towards? And I think that's kind of where we're leaning here, is to see what the community really wants to see for the South Side. We'll notice there are city limits. When you look back at what I just showed between what the city limits and the county boundaries are, it's very fragmented and random in that area. And then we typically see with these infrastructure projects, the private investment will follow the public investment. Throughout the briefings, Wayne talked to me and let me know that some folks had asked about a few items that weren't in the agenda, one of those being economic incentives. This is something we're going to have to look more into, but just, we want to be able to provide you with something. So this here shows some opportunity zone, promise zones, a few other zones that we have. Just to let you know that there are quite a few state, federal and local opportunities within this area for different funding sources, opportunity sources and incentives that may help economically. Another one of the items that was asked about was crime statistics. And we are currently working with TPD on that. We just don't have those for you today, but we will be able to get those. And we are working to figure out the best way to present that. Moving forward, we need to follow, we need to have this process identified. Today, we're here looking at the direction from you all on the focus areas to review of the next year. Since there is a county jurisdiction within this boundary, February, we'll be bringing this to the county for their review and to provide input. In March, it'll come back to a joint planning meeting so that each, the city and the county can see this together and talk about an engagement strategy. And as of April, we'd like to initiate a public engagement strategy. And what we'd like to do is go back really to the community and really look at 20 years we've been looking at the SSA. Where do we go from here? What is it like now? How, how do we get engaged with the community and really figure out what they want to see for the SSA and the South Side and moving forward? And with that, I'd like to hand it back over to ACM Tedder.
Okay, Mayor and Commissioners, if there's some discussion you'd like to have on this item, we're prepared to do that. Otherwise, and I do fully expect that, but we did have for the closeout of this section, the recommendations that we have at the end of this agenda material.
We'll bring these recommendations back for formal approval after public comment.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor. Devin, could you put up one of the maps just for reference as the commission talks about this? Maybe the SSA boundary or the one tools, I think that'd be good reference. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Williams-Cox?
I think that the first, one of the first things we need to do is, you know, is deal with the name. I know that may seem insignificant to some, but you know, it's, it's very important what you call yourself. And so Commissioner Richardson brought to our attention some meetings ago, gave us a his, history of what Southern Strategy meant. And I think that in this day and time and in this climate, it is very important. And I think that in this day and time and in this climate, it is very important that we rebrand ourselves and not be called the Southern Strategy. And so I would like for us to have a discussion, a brief discussion of what should we call ourselves. And you know, I gave this a great thought and because this has been in place for 20 years and had some attention, then it kind of got lost in the shuffle, had some attention and got lost in the shuffle. I want an action, some action to be in the name of this so that we keep it moving because we're going to keep this moving this time. And I'm going to talk with you more about my ideas on that. But I like, I would like to see something more the lines of the South Side Action Plan because we need to put some real action in place. And we're talking about, as Devin said, we're talking about almost 25% of the entire city. So that's a quadrant. That's a quarter, and we're talking about a quadrant. So I've just put that out there, you know, we can talk about it briefly. Like I said, I don't think we need to spend a lot of time with it. But I want us to put something with some action in it because I'm just going to warn you, I'm going to be like a dog with a bone about this one. We spent a lot of time on Wilani and some other places that shall remain nameless. We're going to spend some time on this one, this time. It's been a long time. So we're going to spend some time on this and we're going to get some results. So I want to propose a South Side Action Plan as a potential name.
I think it's great. Any other comments? Mayor Pro Tim on the South Side Action Plan?
I like it. I just have, first off, Devin, thank you for the presentation. I think you're moving in the right direction, but I think we also need, before we take the step, or concurrently when we take the step of updating the plan, go back to the original plan from 20 years ago and just get a review of update. What was planned that we accomplished? What was planned that we didn't accomplish? And then address, you know, why or why not did we not hit those goals from 20 years ago? Because I don't want to get in a cycle where we're perpetually setting goals that we're not hitting and then asking ourselves 20 years later why they didn't. I don't want commissioners 20 years from now relit this plan.
That's not going to happen, Mayor Pro Tim. I just, that's not going to happen. We got all of this right here, all the plans from all of that time because I asked that it be included. So we have all of that. We're not going to go 20 more years with no action. But I understand what you're saying. I'm in concurrence, but can we deal with the name first? Do a step at a time. Name then goal.
Hold on, Madam Attorney.
I think you want to add that to the number of things after the public comment that you take a vote on.
Sure. Sure. You still have the floor, Mayor Pro Tim.
Oh, no, that's the conclusion of my comments, just when we take the next step and get a check-in of what was accomplished and really kind of what was it? And let us know that so it could be incorporated going forward with the new ideas as well.
Any other comments on the South Side Action Plan? DWC, CR, I'm already incorporating it into the conversation.
I appreciate that.
Yeah. All right, let's move forward.
Okay, thank you.
So Commissioner, ACM Tetter is going to be bringing back those recommendations after public comment for formal ratification, one way or the other.
One other thing, Mayor, because I want to deal with one other thing, too, is that I know with past commissions, and I know this because I've been to a few commission meetings, it may not have been welcomed at all of them, but that's okay, I was there. There were times when a commissioner asked to be the lead commissioner on projects. And I'm asking to be the lead commissioner on this one because it's one thing, and I love all of y'all, my colleagues, I love you all, but this is my life every day. And for 30 years, I've worked in the South Side to try to make it better. And I wake up every morning with the sun rising on the South Side over my house. So I live there. I feel it. I know my people. I know you do, too, Commissioner Richardson. But I'd like to be the lead commissioner on this one to make sure we don't go another 20 years without accomplishing what we need to accomplish.
All right.
If my colleagues will support that.
Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I've said this before, I'll say it again now that we're on this agenda item. 30 years ago, when my wife and I were looking at where we would build our home, we decided to build our home on the South Side of town, and we've been there ever since, in the heart of the South Side of Tallahassee. And one of the things that prompted me to run for the city commission at the time, I thought my political career was over when I came out of the legislature in 2008. But what I recognized at the time that there was, there was little, I won't say interest, but emphasis placed on improvements in the South Side of Tallahassee. Basic infrastructure that didn't exist. Utilities, landscaping, streetscaping, sidewalks. And there was nobody at the time on the commission pushing for those improvements. And so that's what prompted me to run for the city commission at the time. And as you all know, that's certainly been one of my top priorities since I've been on the commission. So I'm delighted that we now are putting the emphasis on improvements in the South Side of Tallahassee that we are, particularly as Commissioner Williams Cox said and Commissioner Matlow about the time and effort that we've put into Wilani. But one of the things that I want to be absolutely clear on and that the community understands this, we're not going to put money, we're not going to, at least while I'm on the commission, we're not going to invest money in public infrastructure in the Wilani area unless and until we have improved infrastructure on the South Side of Tallahassee. And I can tell you, in my own neighborhood, we had those clay pipes in one of the intersections that we used to get out of my neighborhood. We couldn't get out of there because those clay pipes burst, and we had to wait until that was fixed before we could even get out of our neighborhood. And so I understand those issues very well. And so I'm excited that we are headed in this direction and that we have committed millions of dollars to infrastructure improvements on the South Side of Tallahassee. But that's got to be where our focus is. And I say that to say this because this is another issue that I bring up and we've seen it in Tallahassee, we've seen it across the state of Florida and in this country. This whole notion of gentrification, you know, we push for development in certain areas, and as those areas are improved, you see the color, literally, the color of those neighborhoods change. So as we move forward and we make these improvements, we've got to keep in mind that we don't want that to happen, this whole notion of gentrification as it has happened, like I said, right here in our own city, but certainly in other communities throughout the state and nation. So as we move forward, let's just keep that in mind as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Richardson, great point. Just as a reminder, we are not committing millions, we are committing hundreds of infrastructure projects.
Yes.
Five to 10 years. I join you. I'm proud of that commitment as well. Commissioner Porter?
Thank you. I have a few questions. One, are we going to return to items C and D, the economic impact and housing? Or will there be a time for discussion on any of those items?
Commissioner, I'm not sure I understand your question relative to the SSA or generally.
No, we a little bit skipped over those items. We went from COVID to the events, and in my packet, I see an economic update and also some information about housing. We don't necessarily need a presentation on them.
I understand your question. There is a great deal of material, written material. We were working to be briefing our presentations, but we're certainly open to having those conversations. I will tell you that I think a good opportunity, generally speaking, will be through the strategic plan discussion because we will touch on housing. I think that's a, and that's what we're looking for, of course. We want to make sure we set the stage for you to give direction. That's probably the best time to do that.
Okay. Thank you. So I agree with everything that's been said about the action plan and the need for a name change, and I also plan to be very involved with this. It's something that is a great, great need. I, what, what is the assessment of, and I know it's a complicated, you know, it's a, there's many issues, there's legal, all kinds of issues. But what is our assessment of why the desired impact on the South Side has not been achieved in these 20 years with plans? And, you know, is it that there was something wrong with the plan? Is it that we did not invest the way we needed to? Or the follow-up or the implementation? You know what I mean? I mean, because I agree with Commissioner Matlow. We've got to, I think, identify where the breakdown was if we're going to move forward, which we all agree we need to.
Yeah, let me offer my thoughts on it, and I'll certainly.
City Manager, I don't want you to get in trouble because you got to tell the truth. And the truth is not a nice answer, like I know you thought you want to hear. It happened before your time. It happened before our time on the commission. As Commissioner Richardson said, Commissioner Porter, there was no emphasis. The interest and the eye to for investment were in other places. And it had to do, you know, nobody will, previous commissions may not agree, but having lived there, it had a lot to do with who lived on the South Side. When you look at where poverty is concentrated, it is concentrated on the South Side and Frenchtown, District One of our county. And until you have some people to bring it to the forefront by either speaking out at commission meetings or getting elected to the commission, Commissioner Richardson, it was not the focus of some folks because the people who lived in the demographic in that area may not have been looked upon as favorably as others. And, you know, shoot me if you want to, but we got to, in order to fix this, we got to expose it. And that's what it was. And I don't expect Reese or Wayne or the mayor or anyone here to be able to say that because it's not politically correct. But the answer is, it didn't happen because it was not a priority. It is now a priority. And it supports the strategic plan in that on the impact, dealing with the impact of poverty, as well as the quality of life for the people on the South Side and in other places of our city that may not have been a focal point in the past. So now, Reese, you can put a bow on it if you want to, but that's what it is. That's what it is. That's what it was. That's what it is, and it stops now.
Reese, you got anything to add to that?
No, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner, you know, Commissioner Williams Cox, this is for the informal setting and whatnot. And I want you to know, I always appreciate your candor.
Yes.
And the way how you express yourself, and thank you.
I just got to be truthful, Mayor, you know, just got to tell the truth and shame the devil, as we used to say.
All right, let's keep moving on with the, I'm sorry, Commissioner Porter, you still have the floor. I apologize.
That's okay. No, I mean, I agree wholeheartedly with what you're saying and that whether something's a priority is probably 90% at least of whether something is successful. But the other 10% is, you know, the elements of the plan because we can be as well-intentioned and as aggressive, and if the plan isn't a good one, we won't have the outcomes we want. And so, you know, those are some questions that I guess, you know, we'll be following up with. I know we're beginning this process of reevaluating and renaming, and I look forward to hearing the public comment on this as well. But I wholeheartedly agree with Commissioner Williams Cox and the others, and this is a priority for me.
All right. Any other comments, questions? Let's move on.
Mr. Mayor, that is all the scheduled material we had prior to a break and public comment. Let me come back around. We are recording at the end of today's discussion, and I'll look for your cue when to do that. We will represent the actions that you had discussed so you can vote on them and provide direction. So, but this is all the structured material we had. We could certainly, at your direction, Mr. Mayor, move into public comments. We have persons in attendance that I would suspect want to make comments. We could do that. And then we have, we have members of the public joining via WebEx. There is, there's someone now, I'm looking at our treasurer clerk, Mr. Cook, and there's another window of opportunity to log into WebEx between, or beginning at 11:00. So I just want to be mindful that I don't want to leave someone out that may be expecting to log in at that time. So we'll certainly look to you for direction and discussion you wish to have.
Commissioners, I think it's appropriate to let the public speak now. We've got a little extra time. They came to be with us. We'll obviously come back as well for any additional members of the public that were planning on speaking at 11:30 since that's what it was announced. But without any objections, Mr. Cook, why don't you walk us through public comment?
All right, Mayor. Thank you very much. We have in person just two individuals who have asked to speak, and we'll hear from them momentarily. We did receive written comments from three individuals. Those were received in advance of the meeting, distributed to you. They will be made part of the record of this meeting. And I believe two of those three also registered to connect via our WebEx connection, so we may hear from them as well. But if you'd like to, we'll go ahead and hear from those two in person. What I don't know, Mr. Mayor, is of those who have expected to speak via WebEx, which of those are connected now and which of those were waiting to connect until 11:00? I think some were going to go ahead and connect just to get in and be able to participate in the full meeting. Others didn't want to tie up their whole morning and were going to wait till 11:00.
So we're flexible, and like I said, we will definitely come back at 11:30. For anyone who is planning on participating, that might not be watching right now, to make sure that we give them the opportunity to speak as well.
Okay. Very good then. Our speakers in person and on WebEx will give each three minutes, as we customarily do at our city commission meetings. In the room, the microphone is right there in the center of the room, just beyond this square of tables. Speakers will come there. There is a timer on the table nearest that microphone. Our first speaker is Whitfield Leland, and our second speaker will be Stanley Sims.
Mr. Leland, thanks for joining us this morning. We appreciate it. You name and address for the record, please, sir.
My name is Whitfield Leland. I reside at 754 West 7th Avenue, Tallahassee, Florida. Just to, I'm going to address your question, Commissioner Porter. The reason why it didn't happen with this action plan is because we were black. The people on those sides of town were black. So to dress it up, I just don't feel like that's a need. And I think that moving forward, I think we get behind support Commissioner Cox and making sure that because of what we're seeing in America today, the only reason that those people didn't get gas and tear gas at the Capitol other day because they wasn't black. So addressing the reason why I came up here this morning, I wrote a little something this morning, I ain't going off the top of my head. I think we can all agree that every issue is connected to public health. We need to start seeing housing as a public health issue and a public safety issue. We need to make, we need to, we need more substance in the community health and wellness objective in the comp plan to address mental health behavior and physical health in aligning with the Department of Health Community Needs Assessment and Plan. What we, what we have, for what we have right now in the plan is, isn't nearly enough. We need to, we need to look at employment and opportunity as public health and public safety issue. We need to look at early childhood development and opportunities and spaces for families to develop in healthy ways, emotional, physical, financial, and as a health issue and a safety issue. We need to rethink and even reword the way we talk about poverty. We should only aim to address the impact. We should only aim to address the impacts of poverty per the strategic plan. We should be addressing the root of poverty, knowing that crime, at-risk behavior, et cetera, and symptoms of an environment that does not have the ability to meet the best, the basic necessities of health for human behavior. In fact, a defunding and di- di- disinvestment of certain priorities of our communities that leads to social problems. We have to prioritize these roots. Uh, we have to prioritize these roots causes by prioritizing the basic needs and infrastructure, the infrastructure people need to survive and strive more than prioritizing convention centers and parking lots. What is the cause of poverty? The lack of, the lack of access to healthcare, unemployment, the absence of social services, race discrimination, poor infrastructure and government corruption.
You have about 15 seconds.
Poor people, poor people often believe they, they are failures and this message of oppression and homelessness affect the ability of hope for a better future. When living in poverty, people hope less and without hope, it is difficult to dream a better way of life and almost impossible to be an agent of positive change. I ask the city and this commission that we really look at some of the issues that I've expressed and we take and make, uh, make these issues, uh, that, that we really look at these issues and, and address them. Thank you.
Great points. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sims, thanks for joining us this morning.
I'm glad and I'm proud.
All right, James. All right. Name and address for it, please.
Name and address for the record. 1320 Avondale Way, but not only do I live on Buck Lake, but I just opened an office in the Frenchtown community called Help. And if I look like I'm excited, like Chico Renfrose, that's because I am excited. And you know why I'm excited? Despite what happened on our nation's Capitol. I had the opportunity to meet with our auditor and he asked me a very profound question when I was discussing some serious issues that I was having with this local government. And he asked me, what did that have to do with this? I broke it down to him like this here. Commissioner Nehemiah Cox, I got permission to call her that. And for all y'all out there, I want you to know, we disagree, we go to the woodshed, we don't always agree. But my grandmama told me anybody that agree with you all the time is some, one of y'all lying. So I want y'all to know, you can stop inboxing me because I got her back. You got upset with me because I backed Curtis, but it was Curtis that told that city manager to let me back in the building. And I went out there breaking in, breaking up down, saying, "Hank Reese killed the mayor." And he had the audacity to ask me, what did that have to do with this? When peaceful protesters ran here, were marching, saying, "Black lives matter," and a red truck, woo, took one of them. No charges. When they was protesting in front of the Capitol, full-fledged military riot gear police operation, 16 arrested, no charges dropped. But Mega Man took the police almost two hours to get there. What does that has to do with this? We got a little bit of Trump in here to, and we got a little bit of Mitch McConnell. I can't get a meeting with the man, the city manager. And guess why? He tides me, but I don't feel no way he's tired.
You're at 15 seconds.
I don't feel no way he's tired. I'm not trying to get a dinner invitation to your house on plantation row. I'm waiting on you to call me because I need to talk to you. People out here are hurrying. Lay aside that you don't like me because I lay aside that I don't too much care for y'all. But my grandma said, respect the chair if you don't like the man sitting there. Y'all be blessed. Black folks vote.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Do we have any other comments?
We have, uh, an additional speaker, Kayla Norris Barber.
Mr. Barber, thank you so much for joining us this morning. Your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Good morning. Kayla Norris Barber, 527 West Brevard Street. Um, I can't say I'm pleased to hear this discussion about Southern Strategy this morning because I heard the same discussion last year. And I heard that it's been 20 years. I went to work for the county in 1990. We was talking about the Southern Strategy then. That's over 30 years. So if we gonna move this thing, I mean, personally, I have no confidence that you're going to do anything. But we haven't done anything. I know it's a different commission, but we haven't done anything in the last 30 years. I actually came here this morning to talk about affordable housing. It's another issue that we're doing nothing on. We talk affordable housing, but we do nothing. We spend money, the money we spent on affordable housing, last month, I think we spent on affordable housing was, that was substantial. We gave it to rebuild a project on Orange Avenue. You know, that's really doesn't do anything to increase wealth of black folks on the South Side. Now, I have submitted a, uh, loan application to help you guys do affordable housing in Frenchtown and Griffin Heights, but it was denied. Oh, reason was not capacity. You don't have capacity. Although we built houses for years, but you don't have capacity. Let me tell you when it would happen. It would happen when you provide incentives in your program for white folks to build houses in Frenchtown and Bond. And I say that because that's my experience. I watched it happen with the Renaissance Center. No one, no, but white people wanted to build the Renaissance Center. Three African-American developers submitted proposals, one was selected. File analysis was, they don't have the capacity. The city came back, gave a white developer a million, 1.5 million dollars, promised to lease the building from him, 50% of it, and they would buy it back in two years. Well, shit, they leased 100% of the building and brought it back from, after it was completed. And that same thing would happen with affordable housing. We here at all affordable housing meetings, we need to give incentives for developers to want to work here. And that just called for, we need to make it attractive for white folks to come build housing in the neighborhood. So, and Commissioner Cox.
You're at 15 seconds.
You know, and when that happened with the Renaissance Center, we had a black city manager, a black mayor and a black person of the department, John Marks, Anita Favors and Tom Lewis.
Thank you for your comments. All right. Mr. Clerk.
Mayor, I've been given word that I think two of our, uh, individuals have connected via WebEx and so I will.
Wonderful.
We'll call those, those two. The first would be Donna Cotrell and then Ronnie Wright. So, uh, Donna Cotrell, if you're connected and you'll unmute yourself, you will have three minutes to speak to the city commission.
Ms. Cotrell, thank you for joining us.
My, my pleasure, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for having me and I'm grateful to be here. Um, I want to say I'm also grateful to Commissioner Williams Cox, uh, for the truth telling and the name change or suggested name change for the South Side Action Plan. I too live on the South Side in the Bond community and so grateful to, uh, know that, um, I'm going to say the work will start up. Um, you know, because as, uh, Commissioner Williams Cox said, you know, there had the stalemate, uh, for a number of reasons. And thank you to Commissioner Richardson, um, for telling it like it is on verification because that is one of my fears living in this community is how, um, the, um, building of the infrastructure may impact those who live here, um, and make it less affordable for those who live here. Um, thanks you to, um, Commissioner Porter for making it a priority. Uh, she and I have talked about this prior to her being elected and so she knows how strongly I feel about this, um, community. And thank you to, um, the Mayor Pro Temp for acknowledging that we need a backwards look. I think as Commissioner Williams Cox said, um, it is, it is what it is. I'm going to use that, um, euphemism. Um, uh, again, my name is Donna Cotterell and I, some of you know, am, um, the founder and director of Endaba Theater. And Endaba Theater has a new home here on the South Side in the new rural village where we will host multicultural events and performances, uh, theater, music and dance for children and families. Uh, as we build, uh, we want to create a multipurpose, uh, center for the arts where young people will be at the center, mentored by caring adults, instilling in them a desire to become community leaders themselves and play a significant role in revitalizing the city. Um, Endaba is a Zulu word for coming together for a meeting or a purpose. Our purpose is to, among other things, inspire, empower, uplift and to create a harmonious and unified community, helping to curb youth violence and create help, healthy self-expression. And in that vein, we envision a STEAM camp created right here on the South Side where they'll be mentoring programs for South Side residents as well as Frenchtown. And I'm hoping, um, and looking forward to the, to the city and making that a reality and using that space, um, as a, a place for healing. Um, the one thing about healing is we can't fix the problem until we identify it. And I think, um, some of that has started to happen and I'm happy to see that. And, um, that ends my portion, uh, this morning and, um, thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Great. Thanks for joining us. We appreciate it. Could, could you give us, uh, your name and address for the record or your, specifically your address?
Sure. My name is Donna Cotterell. I live at 703 O'Seola Street.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor, our next speaker is Ronnie Wright.
Mr. Wright, thank you for joining us. We appreciate it. Your, your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, can you see me?
Uh, Ms. Wright, I can see you barely, but I can see you.
Okay. It must be a bad connection. My name is Ronnie Wright and I am at 1612 Levy Avenue. Um, is that good?
You're great.
All right. Excellent. Today, Mayor and Commissioners, for all that don't know me, I'm Ronnie, a person who lives and in and works on stuff for Providence. The official statement from Providence Neighborhood Association is in your package, so this is just me. I'm here because someone has made a grave mistake regarding Providence Neighborhood. Somebody made a sweeping statement in the materials on the Southern Strategy update that our plan, the Providence Neighborhood Plan, um, is, in fact, that most goals and recommendations in the plan were completed. And that's in Exhibit 19, Summary of Neighborhood and Sector Plans. I'm not sure how they came up with that because the plan was not reviewed with us and it has never been reviewed with us. Page 89 of the PNA Plan states the Providence Neighborhood Plan will be reviewed on a yearly basis. The neighborhood planner, working in conjunction with the Neighborhood Association, will be responsible for the review of the plan. If the evaluation reveals the need to change the plan, then a neighborhood planning team will be formed to address the issues of the concern. Revisions to the adopted neighborhood plan will follow the procedures that were used to develop and adopt the original plan. So our plan has been told to us that it was expired. You all have said it's completed and we've been told that it must be updated. But apparently it was fine for, to support the funding for Blueprint, but it's not been good enough to fund our own plan projects. We've been told that in order to get our plan funded, we must go through the refresh, get input from community outreaches. Well, I think the problem isn't our plan, but the city's process of starting all over again and not picking up where we left off. In order to do that, the outcomes need to be reviewed by your staff with planning data provided. When presented to us, we could then discuss if we have had positive results and why or why not. You see, you all are about to embark on a quest to gather community outreach without providing the data to be reviewed first. How can we discuss how to move forward and make informed decisions if we don't have the support as promised from the neighborhood planners? When I look at the statistical results in today's material, I am thoroughly disappointed with what I see, with jobs, homeownership, all of it, especially because the amount that Providence Neighborhood Association members and our supporters have put in over the years. In our neighborhood, I can tell you why things haven't changed. It's obvious that when money has been spent, it hasn't been held to the planned outcomes. The center is a great example. What we wanted in our plan was a rec center, after school, job training, healthcare, drug and alcohol programs, parenting, tutoring, childcare. And what we have is an after school facility with occasional programs on selected topics. We were looking for a beating heart to drive our community and what we have is a facility that's been closed since the beginning of the pandemic. That's not a great way to have invested $786,000. I just think that you need to look at, I just think you need to look at our plan with us to see what can be done to help us, to help you, to move the South Side as a whole forward. Thank you for your time.
Wow, thank you. Thank you so much for your comments. Certainly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mayor, that's the last person we have connected at this point, but we do have an additional speaker who has, has arrived at the meeting. So Margaret Moore, uh, will be our next speaker.
Great. Ms. Moore, thanks for joining us. We appreciate it. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Margaret Moore. I live at 1910 Monticello Drive. I ran down here when I was listening at home and discovered public comment was going to start immediately. I emailed all of you individually a few days ago about my worries and concerns about the safety and well-being of our neighborhoods. I'm worried about what happened at the Capitol last week. I'm worried about it happening here. I went to a press conference yesterday, overheard Reverend Lee Johnson speak. He was the only one who spoke to my fear that our law enforcement has been compromised as well. I am not comfortable sending our law enforcement to deal with any potential incidents that might occur this weekend. In general, as I look back on 2020, I see nothing, I see nothing but evidence to back up my fears. I, I just wanted to say, Commissioners, please, fight for the economic and civil rights of all citizens. The politics of domination of each other I have watched play out over the last decades living in Tallahassee. Our neighborhoods are eating each other alive and being denied the rights they deserve. What claim will you have by prioritizing these short-term development goals over the long-term degradation of neighborhoods and the displacement of residents? These are all very varied issues. I feel like they all boil down to one important thing. Our city profits from engages in white supremacy. We need to fight white supremacy in our city from the top down. I do not want to see the further militarization of our police until we know there are no ties between white supremacy groups and hate groups between our local law enforcement. I am afraid for our city. I know there's a lot of people who can speak more clearly than me on this issue because it's an emotional one. I have been writing. I have been protesting. I have been doing everything I can from the corner of my mouth over the last year to bring attention to the fact our police are racist, they are militarized, they operate above reproach. We need community control of our police. Thank you. Good luck next year because this town really needs it.
Thank you. Thanks for joining us this morning. Mr. Clerk?
I have no other speakers at this time.
All right. Why don't we go ahead and it's a couple of minutes prior, but we can, uh, take our scheduled break. We will come back in at 11:30. Any parting comments, Mr. Manager, before we do so?
No, sir.
All right. We are in recess till 11:30.
Mayor, we have, uh, three individuals in person who'd like to, to speak at this time. I will also let anyone else who's in attendance and would like to speak, uh, remind you to go to the table behind me and if you wouldn't fill out a speaker form and we'll, we'll add you to the list and call you. Um, we have about 10 or so folks. Actually, probably fewer than that because a couple of them have, have come in person, but a number of folks who will speak, uh, via WebEx as well, but we'll take the in, in-person speakers first. Our first speaker will be Debbie Lightsey and then Darrell Williams. Uh, speakers will be at the microphone right here in the middle of the room. If you'll give your name and address to start, we'll give you three minutes each.
Excellent. Thanks for joining us. Your name and address, please, Ms. Lightsey.
Good morning, everybody. I was going to speak on WebEx, but since I live about three minutes from here, I just decided to drive over. Um, two issues that are on your agenda today. Oh, light address. Oh, my address, 2340 Cypress Cove Drive. First issue is South Side revitalization. This government talks a lot about its commitment to the South Side. The action, however, mostly takes the form of public dollars spent on big infrastructure projects. The South Side will not be revitalized without private investment. To be successful there, you must do three things. The first one is to review current land use and zoning. The South Side is packed with LULU's, locally undesirable land uses. Industrial land uses have the infrastructure, intense commercial, and zoning that allows almost unlimited outside storage, motor vehicle repair, and junkyards. The prevalence of these undesirable land uses is particularly ironic and harmful, since all the maps y'all use today indicate how environmentally sensitive this area is. This is absolutely the wrong place to assign these uses. It will take political courage to fix this, because you will have to reclassify and upzone property. Secondly, hire more code inspectors and charge the code enforcement department with aggressively ferreting out violations, issuing citations, levying fine, and if necessary, putting liens on property. Blight and longstanding code violations are visible throughout the South Side. This kind of change requires day-in and day-out attention and hard work, and it will not happen unless this commission directs their staff to treat it with deadly seriousness, including charging the city attorney's office to take appropriate action and be aggressive. Finally, update your codes and standards. Bill Pable has already made a good start on a set of recommendations after many months I have been working with him. Affordable housing. Four specific recommendations. After your housing director retired, you didn't replace him, instead adding housing to the job description of a staff person who already had a full set of duties. That act alone indicates the low priority this government puts on housing. You've got to designate someone as a full-time director of housing, someone who is bold, has vision, and a proven track record of producing actual affordable housing units for low-through-middle-income people. Secondly, the city owns 425 acres in Waloney with an approved PUD. That PUD includes areas for mixed-use density housing. Your ownership of the property and the ability to provide full infrastructure at no cost to developers can buy down the cost and allow housing units for both rental and homeownership for very low, low, and middle-income families.
You have almost three minutes.
Strengthen your inclusionary housing ordinance. During the Waloney discussions, one of your staff members acknowledged that the inclusionary housing ordinance was weak and needed revisiting. Find the five most successful affordable housing programs in Florida and pick the best elements from each. And lastly, put some local money into affordable housing and stop relying on dwindling state and federal funds to operate your affordable housing program. We have an affordable housing crisis here. Treat it as such. Thank you.
Next speaker, Mr. Clerk?
Darrell Williams, followed by Michael McCoughlin.
Mr. Williams can see, sir. Your name and address for the record, please.
Darrell Williams, 2396 James Street. Just to, you all were speaking about the vaccine. I just wanted to make sure that you all didn't mention the veterans. Just a little information, the VA actually offers the vaccine also. So if you all kind of keep that in mind to kind of put that out, because the VA doesn't always get out to all the veterans. So if you all can kind of implement that and kind of keep that in mind, that maybe we need to put some information out about that to see what the VA is doing and what they have going on. Next issue is South Side. I was born and raised on the South Side. Joined the military, went to military, came back, went to college, left, went away, been gone for a while. I'm 55 years old. I came back and retired, built a home here on the South Side where I am now. Just disappointed, really disappointed in what the South Side looks like. I remember riding my bicycle all over the South Side, and I see the same thing that I see when I was 12, 13 years old, and improved. You all know that. Commissioner Cox, we've talked, think she has some wonderful ideas. I've reached out to the other commissioners. We just got to do better. I mean, I think you all have listened to people come up and talk, and you know it's an issue. I mean, you got to know. Like I told Ms. Cox, I said, they can't do it by themselves. Commissions can't do it. I mean, you all here, you've got a diverse commission. I think you all have some great people, but I also believe in the community. We got to step up on the South Side. I see a few people here talking about the South Side, but Ms. Cox and I talked about having foot soldiers. I'm a foot soldier. I can, if we need to pack it up here with South Side people, to get you all's attention and say, "South Side is priority now." That's what it should be. It should be priority today. Should be no ifs, and buts about. I mean, 30 years, you all mentioned 30 years. I'm 55. Same thing. We got to get businesses on the South Side. We got to keep it, clean it up. We got to make ownership, make businesses that is on the South Side, respect the South Side. Your storefronts, all of that, that's all included. People that own businesses on the South Side or own property on the South Side, they have to get it up, have to keep it up. That's our responsibility as a community. So I will ask you all to make sure that you all listen to the commissioners that's involved on the South Side, make it a priority. Nothing else here in Tallahassee should be a priority over the South Side at this point. You all know it. It's been going on too long. South Side is a part of Tallahassee, but if you've been here a while, you wouldn't think South Side was a part of Tallahassee. You go north of that capital, whole different story. Shouldn't be that way. And the last thing, this is my first time attending a meeting here. The issue about the, it was funny when I heard you all had named the plan, the...
Strategy.
Right. It was kind of funny, because I said, "How did that happen?" If you know any history, you would know right away. Whoever suggested that should have said, "Wait, there's no way we're going to introduce that to be the name." You just should have caught it right off the bat. And that was disappointing, that that was the first time I've even heard it, and it caught me, it made me think, like, how did that happen? That's a sign of disrespect. You got to know that with the diverse you have on the commission. Whoever brought that episode, right away caught it. So we need to do better, and we got to do better. If I can, whatever I can do, I told Ms. Cox, whatever I can do, I do it. It doesn't bother me one bit. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Williams, thank you so much, and you are correct. Unfortunately, you know, we're a new commission. The name of the Southern Strategy as part of the Conference of Plan was adopted by commissions many, 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 many years ago. So I am proud to be part of this body and joining my colleagues to change that name and head in a new direction. By the way, thank you for your service to our country. Appreciate it. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk?
Michael McCoughlin.
Thanks for joining us today. We appreciate it.
Good morning. My name's Michael McCoughlin. I'm at 100 Cadiz Street. Commissioner Richardson and Commissioner Williams Cox, we heard your statements earlier today, pledging to make the South Side a priority. I just know that we, the people, are going to be expecting you to follow through, and we're going to hold you to those promises. As you go about making the South Side a priority, make Black poverty-impacted residents of the South Side a priority. Listen to their demands and act on those. Don't gentrify South Side until white people like myself move in. Instead, think how you, rethink how you as our local government relate to the people, especially Black folks on the South Side. What we need is a radical revisioning of how the city interacts with and supports its civilians. We need a city government that takes resources from those who have more than they need and builds Black wealth in the South Side. We need a city government built around the needs of the most marginalized, not a city where a third of the budget goes to the police, but consistently shown they do not keep us safe. Instead, we need to take funding from the TPD and move that funding to resources that actually help the people, like more mental health services and services to support homeless people and such. What we need is a people's budget. And only when the city government and the city's budget is built around the people, the needs of the people, only then might this be a city in which Black lives actually matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker?
That is the last speaker we have in person, mayor, so we will move to those who are connected virtually. Our first speaker will be Katrina Irwin, followed by Charlotte Stewart Tilly, and our first three speakers are individuals who've worked together, so you'll hear a continued theme through those. Katrina Irwin will get us started with the name and address.
Great, wonderful. Thanks for joining us. We appreciate it.
Katrina Irwin, 1800 West Pensacola Street, 32304. Good morning, honorable commissioners. I am here on behalf of local youth climate activists who would like to see a climate emergency declaration passed in Tallahassee. Climate emergency declarations have already been passed in Miami and Orlando. With that being said, I would like to present a video by Sabrina Hugh, who could not be here today, as she is currently taking a final exam. Do you all have the video on file, or would you like me to play it? Commissioners?
Hello?
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, perfect. You all have it. Fantastic. Thank you.
Hello, honorable commissioners. My name is Sabrina. I live at 3134 Beringer Hill Drive, Tallahassee, Florida 32311. I'm 17 years old. I'm a representative for Gen Clio and YEL, and I want to talk about passing a climate emergency declaration with the city of Tallahassee. So here's my story. On a family trip to Beijing, all I could see were stretching gray skies, smog so thick it blanketed the city, and residents wearing masks even before COVID. And I learned that breathing the air was as harmful as smoking cigarettes. And I later realized that issues like these were just as prevalent in Tallahassee. Historically, Black and Brown communities, you know, railroad tracks or highways are exposed to contaminants that cause early death, lung and breathing issues, heart attacks, and strokes. Climate change isn't just an environmental thing. It affects nearly everything, from racial justice, social justice, gender inequality, food insecurity, housing, mental health, and so much more. This affects everyone, not just certain groups of people. These issues are all interconnected. Food justice, water security, and clean air cannot be separated from environmental justice. One cannot be solved until the others are also addressed. So we applaud the city of Tallahassee for passing the 100% renewable energy resolution, but it's not enough. For our city to be a leader in the climate community, we need to address the intersectional issues, not just energy. This is why Tallahassee needs to pass a climate emergency declaration. The declaration is a continuation of what Tallahassee is doing. It recognizes the reality and urgency of the climate crisis, supports a national declaration, and marks the beginning of concrete climate action at a local level. We know you care about the environment, and this would be a great way to propel this mission. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Charlotte Stewart Tilly, and then Sarah Galt. And commissioners, I'll pass you from, Charlotte Stewart Tilly had provided some slides, and so in the event that they don't come through here, I'm going to hand them to you, so you'll have them and can follow us.
Excellent.
Not on the screen.
Hey, thanks for joining us. We appreciate it.
Thank you, yes. Hello, esteemed commissioners. My name is Charlotte Stewart Tilly. I live at 1924 East Indian Head Drive, and I'm a sophomore in high school. I'm here today representing Variety's For Future Tallahassee, Rethink Energy's YEL, and the Clio Institute. Tallahassee has long been a leader in climate. Our fleet of electric buses, or how we passed the historic 100% clean energy resolution. But as governments around the world seek to do more to stop climate change, there is one initiative we have been slow in taking, a climate emergency declaration, a formal acknowledgement of the climate crisis and the role our local government has to play. Cities like Miami and Orlando have already passed climate emergency declarations, and I am confident that Tallahassee has what it takes, the leadership and the commitment to environmental protection and the well-being of its citizens to pass a climate emergency declaration of our own. Florida is one of the most vulnerable states for climate change. We've seen our neighbors in Panama City devastated by the effects of the climate crisis, and we've worked with them to rebuild their communities. We could be next. An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. Initiatives not only mitigate impact but to limit our emissions are the best prevention for the effects of climate change. Tallahassee is a leader in climate and social issues. We are a model of a growing city, where you need to change and adapt for new problems that arise. Fellow local youth leaders are calling for the same thing I am, a rapid, yet successful just transition away from carbon emissions and things that enable them. Ingrid Hanley has led the initiative to ban styrofoam in Leon County schools. My fellow Clio Institute youth leaders and I have worked to organize virtual events for other young climate activists to make action while in quarantine. Before the pandemic, I held strength hikes at the Florida Historic Capitol Building, where many like-minded community members joined me. Our goals are attainable and represent the consensus of local residents. Climate change is real and will have devastating effects, but we have the opportunity to work together and do our part. Tallahassee's leadership in climate makes us the prime candidate to pass a climate emergency declaration. We are ready to challenge old, outdated ideas and replace them with new, innovative ones. While we cannot stop climate change alone, we have the opportunity to step up and lead the charge on international efforts to stop the drastic impact around the world. I am asking you to support a climate emergency declaration for the city of Tallahassee. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Sarah Galt, and then Max Epstein. Sarah Galt is next.
Sarah, thanks for joining us. We appreciate it.
Thanks for having me. Hello, honorable commissioners. My name is Sarah Galt, and my address is 221 Bamboo Drive, Tallahassee, Florida 32304. I work with Rethink Energy Florida as their youth outreach coordinator, and I'm here on behalf of Nea Ogletree, who is also unable to attend due to test-taking, and I believe her video should be on the slides.
Good morning, honorable commissioners. First of all, thank you for your work and dedication to the city of Tallahassee. My name is Nea Ogletree. I'm a senior at Rickards High School, representing Gen Clio and the Young Environmental Leaders Club. I'm here to talk to you about the climate crisis, something I'm very passionate about. Good morning, honorable commissioners. First of all, thank you for your work and dedication to the city of Tallahassee. My name is Nea Ogletree. I'm a senior at Rickards High School, representing Gen Clio and the Young Environmental Leaders Club. I'm here to talk to you about the climate crisis, something I'm very passionate about. I'm asking you to please support the passing of a climate emergency declaration. I've lived in Tallahassee all of my life and known Tallahassee to be a great city. However, there are various issues that we're currently facing. These issues are the environment, there's social issues, as well as the economy. Tallahassee can be a leader in solving these issues by passing a climate emergency declaration. Climate emergency is a way to hold our city and city leaders accountable for creating policy that has climate change and climate justice in mind. Passing this climate emergency declaration will be a continuation of the work that Tallahassee has already done. It is now 2021, and climate change is something that I know is important, because it is a huge threat to my generation. Tallahassee has already taken the first steps in taking action against climate change. We've committed to renewable energy goals and efficiency within our city, but we can't stop here. Tallahassee can continue to lead even more. This graph here shows cities and municipalities that have already passed climate emergencies. As you can see, adding Tallahassee to this graph will not only encourage other Florida cities to pass climate emergency declarations, but allow Tallahassee to be an example to cities across the country. With Tallahassee as a leader in climate action, Florida will also have new potential to be a leading state. There is so much support for passing a climate emergency There is so much support for passing a climate emergency in Tallahassee. Organizations across the state like GenCleo, which I'm a part of, and our climate, Rethink Energy Florida, are all committed to working with city leaders on the climate emergency declaration and future climate legislation. Governments all over Florida have already passed this resolution, including multiple municipalities in Miami and recently one in Orlando. The climate emergency involves more than just issues of global warming. Like Sabrina said before, climate change affects so much more: our health, the economy, and water and air quality. Commissioners, I ask you once more, please support passing a climate emergency declaration for Tallahassee. We would like to send you the language of the declaration by the end of next week. I want to work with you all in passing this and creating a sustainable future for our children and grandchildren. Your constituents are dependent on the decisions that you make today. My generation is counting on all of you to hold Tallahassee accountable for future climate action and policy. Thank you for your time.
All right.
Our next speaker is Max Epstein.
Hello, Honorable Commissioners. My name is Sabrina. I live at 3134 Beringer Hill Drive.
Stop that replay, but our next speaker connected should be Max Epstein, followed by Wendy Gray.
All right. Mr. Epstein, thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please. Mr. Epstein, are you with us? One more time, Mr. Epstein. All right, moving on. Ms. Gray, are you -- oh, there he is. Okay. Max, thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please. I believe you're on mute. Mr. Epstein, I believe you're on mute. We can't hear you.
Is that better? Can you hear me now? Hello?
We can barely hear you.
Okay, well, I'll try.
There we go.
Excellent. All right. Max Epstein, 1001 Van Lewis Road. I'm here to talk about a couple of things, which is the environment and also gentrification and displacement. I'd like to echo everything that the speakers before me have said, including Hubba Bubba and Mr. Barber, about our affordable housing. And I was reviewing the so-called Southern Strategy materials in the packet, and I thought I was reading the description of the Walani Project. And in less than a year during a pandemic, the city and county was able to get through a massive plan for the northeast of Tallahassee. So there's no reason why we can't get a plan for the southern area done. I'm also troubled by this section that covers displacement. And it says ensuring adequate supply of affordable housing. We know that we cannot replace what we have when you destroy something what we currently have. And I have come to this commission to talk about the compensation problems along Sandy Way. And we've been told that everyone was compensated correctly. Well, I'm looking at a blueprint document right now. It shows that the property that was to be replaced cost $635 a month, including utilities. And a comparable analysis finding was $1,100. That shows that blueprints themselves determine that this family deserved almost $20,000 to receive $5,000. But that really just highlights our affordable housing crisis and the wealth disparity between those who have and those who don't. And we must figure out how to keep this intergenerational wealth within Black families and to create it, not to destroy it. There's no reason why you can't make things right for these families. And thus creating affordable housing and renting, when you have bonds and providence that are 90% renters, we need to be getting them into homes to own it. So I'd like to see that as a priority.
You're at about 20 seconds.
Okay. Well, the last thing I'll say is I've been following along, so, you know, I don't have 20 seconds, so I'll just add to it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Wendy Gray. I see her on the screen, so name and address, and you can begin, and you'll be followed by Ray Akbar.
Thanks for joining us, Ms. Gray.
Thank you for having me. Wendy Gray, 1047 Myers Park Drive in Tallahassee. And I'm here today speaking on behalf of the Alliance of Tallahassee Neighborhoods. You may recall that the Alliance raised the issue during the Walani Complan amendments about the lack of implementation of the southern, what we call the South Side Action Area. And so we are very supportive of all the efforts that this city will be taking to make this a top priority. As the agenda item that you received recognizes, the goals of the South Side Action Area have not been met. And data is an important part of telling the story, although it's not the whole story. Your report says that the population in the southern, in the South Side Action Area decreased from 27% of Leon County population in 1970 to only 13% in 2019. In 2019, unemployment rate in the South Side Action Area was twice the rate outside for Leon County as a whole. And median income in the South Side Action Area was 76% of the Leon County median income in 1970, but only 53% in 2019. ATN recommends that the March 2020 workshop proposed by staff focuses on this data and trends. This information will be helpful to define what success looks like for both the commission and for the public. Secondly, ATN asks that the commission commit to conducting policy workshops on substantive issues such as housing, land use in South Side neighborhoods, and infrastructure needs that directly serve South Side residents and businesses, and that these workshops should come before the presentation of any draft changes to the complan. It is as important for the public to hear from you, the elected officials, as it is for you to hear from the public. The time to present recommendations is after the commissions and the publics have had their chance to speak. Thank you very much.
Next is Ray Akbar. We also had Delatory Hollinger, who had indicated interest in speaking. I don't believe he's connected, but I'm calling his name now just so he can be queued up if he has connected. Ray Akbar, please.
Good morning. Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Good morning. Loud and clear.
Okay. Terrific. It's good to hear your voice again, Mayor Daly. I just want to just say, I think you're doing a terrific job. I mean, this pandemic has been, you know, since the last time we spoke, we were talking about increasing the representation of arts in the community, and here we are now dealing with a whole nother ball of wax. And I just think you're continuing to guide the ship in the right direction. So I just want to say that. Good morning, Commissioner Richardson and A.K. I want to thank you for your on-the-ground support of the Nakoma neighborhood, our first Nakoma Day and the planning of that. You've been just absolutely terrific. I'm at 3236 Nakoma Lane. That's my address, part of the Nakoma neighborhood and the 32304 zip code, way out here west near Gretchen Everhart and Tallahassee Community College. Commissioner Richardson, A.K., you've been on the ground from day one, involved with our efforts here. And of course, Commissioner Proctor, even before you started your job, you were here working with us on these issues. So I want to just publicly acknowledge that and thank you for what you're doing, and especially for you, Commissioner Proctor, for being a person of your word and continuing to stay in the grassroots, making sure that the people comment. And of course, good morning to all of the other Commissioners who I haven't met yet, and my fellow neighbors, many of you I've spoken with about these issues. And primarily, on the very micro level in the Nakoma neighborhood, we understand the sidewalk, this is what we're dealing with. We're dealing with sidewalks, that basic level of infrastructure. We understand that February, late January, that's about the beginning. We're really hopeful about that because right now it's life-threatening for many people to get from their home to get food, which is why we started the Nakoma Day. Once a month, we make sure Second Harvest comes over here, leaves food in front of my house, and we make sure it gets with volunteers door-to-door in our neighborhoods so people aren't sitting around starving. And so we're excited about that project. I've spoken with Ms. Edwards about this and Ms. Calder about the lack of accessibility of recreational services.
You're off. Right at it.
I'm at three now?
Take a few seconds.
Okay, okay, great. Well, listen, thank you for what you do. Let's continue to engage in this conversation in the way that we've been doing it. On some of these more macro issues, particularly race, what we've started doing is a reparations ordinance. And anyone interested in talking more about that, please get in touch with me. And I think that will be a more comprehensive way of dealing with housing, race, leasing, et cetera. Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you.
I'll call Delatory Hollinger.
Mr. Hollinger, are you with us?
I don't think so, Mayor. I just wanted to make a double check. That's the last of our speakers connected virtually. We did have a couple of citizens who were here and spoke earlier who had hoped to have an additional opportunity to speak on another topic, but I believe, I'm assuming we're going to follow our established practice that we have speakers speak at one time in each meeting, and then obviously we have separate meetings where people can follow up if they need to.
Great. Thank you very much. Mr. Manager, coming back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, we'll move to the next section of the agenda, which is a strategic plan review. Christian Doolin, who's our Director of Strategic Innovation, he and his team have supported this compilation of a strategic plan that you approved a little over a year ago. They've worked tirelessly to develop a dashboard to help us measure and monitor our progress toward accomplishing the 130-plus targets and goals that are included in that plan. And so we've got a presentation. We will not touch, again, we will not touch on all 130-plus targets and goals, but a sampling of those to spur conversation and highlight a few areas of progress and some that present as challenges. So Christian will work in our various subject matter experts from departments, so you hear directly from them as well. Clearly, we have a very broad organization that covers a lot of services, so I want you to hear from as many experts as you can. So with that, I'm going to turn it over. Christian is participating via WebEx. I'm going to turn it over to him to walk us through the presentation.
Thank you, Manager. Can I just get someone to call out? Can you hear me and see the slides?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Greetings, Commissioner, and Commissioners and Mayor. The manager just teed it up pretty well. There's not a lot more I can say. It's just that my goal is to move quick and provide detail, provide you as much time for discussion and feedback as we can. So I'm going to move pretty quick here. I would say where we're going, we don't need roads, like Back to the Future, but in Tallahassee, we probably have some targets talking about we need more roads. So with that, I will jump into economic development. So the first of multiple areas in our plan that we'll cover today. And the formal target here is to advance the city as an economic hub. We do this through our efforts at the airport, new jobs in target areas and infrastructure investment. This first target I want to light on, one of a few here in this area, is around our customs facility. We have a goal to have that completed construction by 2024. That is currently approaching 100% design on completion. And our passenger facility, as you can see here, that we're focused on is a requirement for, and a precursor for establishing our city and the airport as a foreign trade zone. So a lot of, that's our future forward look there. Right now, we have received $5.5 million from the FDOT in funding, and we are currently seeking $16.7 million more from the Federal Job Growth Fund on that metric. A couple more here in economic development, just to touch on briefly. One, another target we have is investing $25 million in stormwater capacity through 2024. Our base, you can see some historical data here. You'll see historical data throughout our dashboard, because that was your direction. That's for context and baseline. Going to focus now on FY19. We were, we invested $8.9 million roughly in stormwater capacity enhancements. And last year, we invested $14.58 million. So that was a pretty substantive increase. It included the Weems Road Pass and Weems Road Extensions. And that amount would represent a little more than 50% of our target towards the 2024 goal. And finally, one more thing I'll add here. As you know, we have a target to lease 100 additional acres of land out at the airport from where we were in 2019. So we had roughly 478 leased as of FY19, and we're now at a little more than 500, 22.8 new acres due to expansion from FedEx leases. That represents a 22% increase on our overall target, so tracking well there. For impact of poverty, as you know, I mean, you can read the target here. Our focus is really on connecting folks to resources to remove barriers they confront economically, socially, otherwise, and those influencing factors of poverty. We do this through our re-engagement in education initiatives, housing, and health. A few targets here, I'll touch on the first one, is around our engagement efforts in community services and tempo. We want to reduce our 7,000 disconnected youth here in town by 30% over five years. As of FY19, we had 700 folks engaged. As of now, FY20, we have 1,199. So that's 499, almost 500 new folks that we have connected with last year. And that is overall on that 7,000, that's a 7% reduction in one year, and about a quarter of the way towards our target. So great work from Kimball. I'm going to turn it over now to Director Ojitaio, who's going to walk us through a couple of our other impact of poverty metrics. Hey, Abena, I think you're on mute. Can't hear you yet. I wonder if I should go on mute? Would that help?
Abena, we can't hear you if you're speaking. Christian, why don't you walk us through these next couple, and we'll work on getting Abena with a good audible connection.
Absolutely. And Abena, if you just want to, as soon as you're live, you just step on me and I'll step off. So first target here, we have four, we're targeting 425 homes rehabbed or receiving emergency repair in the next five years. You can see here from 2014 to 2019, we hit roughly about 636 homes. And now, we have, last year increased 122, or I think Abena told me, 128 new homes last year. So that's a third, almost roughly a third of our target over the five-year plan. We're trending well there. Let me see. Okay. We have a target of city employees building 10 Habitat for Humanity homes over the five-year period. You can see over the past five years, we've, as an employee body, we've built eight homes over the past four years. This year, we initiated three and completed one. Obviously, COVID had a significant impact on this, and we'll be redoubling efforts in future years, which hopefully Director Ojitaio can provide some further context on if needed. And then finally, we have a target of providing 125 grants for down payment assistance, creating pathways to ownership on our community. And what you can see here, over the prior five years, cumulatively, the city provided roughly 163 grants. roughly 163 grants and in the last year, we provided 21 more and that is, again, that accounts roughly 17% progress toward our five-year goal.
Hey, Christian?
There you are. So I'm going to turn it over to Director Ojitaio to see if you have anything else to add.
Thank you so much and you did that very well, I appreciate it. I had to switch to the phone all of a sudden. Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity. I just wanted to preamble the, the metrics by saying that are amazing and a very compassionate team at the Housing and Community Resilience Department, they're working hard every day to reduce the impact of poverty and we focus on safety net services, neighborhood preservation and environmental stewardship. We know that having decent and affordable housing is foundational to a resilient and sustainable community and the challenge is multifaceted, but the solutions require many partners. And so our focus, as you see with the metrics that are highlighted here, as well as some of the, several of the strategies that, we can't even go in depth here, but you get an opportunity to play a role in, all focused on creating a supportive environment to build, own and preserve housing that is affordable for low and moderate income households. And we do this through a variety of tools and so our efforts are focused on enhancing our toolkit, adding more as we have the opportunity to, and really drilling down on, one, as you saw, the repair and rehab because we know that we cannot lose any of the existing housing stock and we, we do a tremendous amount of repairs and rehab throughout the year and we're well on our way there. The incentivizing affordable housing development is to encourage more partners to participate in this effort. We know that a significant lift has to come from our private sector and so we try to create an environment where there are incentives. And in the case of Habitat, as you know, we, the city employees directly participate in the construction and we're committed to continue to do that in the, in the years ahead. But we also know that sometimes households need help just closing the deal on a new home and so our down payment assistance program makes ownership, homeownership affordable for many families each year and it anchors neighborhoods with stable residents. Our target there allows us to keep going forward with this time-tested and well-established program in our community and we are well on track with the metrics from last fiscal year to meet our, our target over the next four years. And so I'll end there briefly and pass it back to Director Doolin.
Thank you. So moving into our third area, so organizational effectiveness, our focus here is on impact, being an inclusive, tech-driven workforce. A few comments on, on the targets here. First, we've had an ongoing effort to become fully paperless and a few highlights from this year would include taking our purchase order process for vendors, issuing purchase orders, moving that from about a seven to 10-day process to a 24-hour process, new e-signature process that reduced contract execution times from about 80 hours to four hours, so that's a 90%, 96% reduction. And then we have a paperless personnel change effort that's reduced a six-day process to about three days or per form about 18 hours of savings. So that's going to be an ongoing effort, there's always some yards to grab there and we'll continue focusing there. Director, you know, Director Jeff took this target very seriously, it's a five-year target to become a top 100 fleet and him and his team within one year, they did it, I think, in spades. So just, you can read the slide here, but top 50 leading government fleet in the nation, 19th in the nation overall and 2020 green fleet. So this is a reflection of their professionalism and hard work to make sure we all have available fleets for, for delivering those services. And finally, I'm going to turn it over to Assistant City Manager Lavin to talk a little bit about this target of our focus on fiscal stewardship and responsibility in maintaining our municipal AA best-in-class bond rating.
Thank you, Christian. Is this on?
Yeah.
Christian, yes, on, on this goal, we set targets to ensure that our bond ratings are at the highest level and working closely with Jim Cook's office as we go through the budget process and as we go through the financial closeout every year and as we look at borrowing money, we're working closely with Jim and with the credit rating agencies to make sure that our bonds are rated the highest that we can get, which ensures that we can borrow money at a much lower interest rate. So we continue focusing on that. It's been part of our focus from a financial management perspective for many years and as you can see, the ratings that we have attest that, that work for both Jim and, and our, our part.
Fantastic, moving on. So in public infrastructure, we have two goals in this area. One is to be a leading utility supporting growing progressive community and the other is around us, our efficiency for our public transit network. I'll touch on a few here. The first is our target to convert 20, our light duty fleet, convert 25, a quarter of it to electric hybrid or CNG over the five-year period. You can see we've hovered in prior years around 2% of the fleet and in the last year, we converted an additional more than 5%. So we're at a 20% of our target, we're tracking here, good, good headway on that conversion. A real exciting one, always love to talk about this, so the on-time transit performance, we have a target to reach 90% over five years. This is industry standard metric that Star Metro has been improving on over the years. As of last year, FY19, we were at 79% and over FY20, we reached 86%. So that's a 17, 7% increase through, through route changes and efficiency gains and more than half of our target. And when you think about what that means to folks sitting at our stations and stops, that's hours, minutes, hours of time that we are making sure we are not needing to run our, run our, our services. So that's fantastic. And then finally, I'm going to turn it over to Director Magiera to talk a little bit about the, the city's clean energy plan efforts.
Thank you, Christian. Commissioners and Mayor, as you know, y'all adopted the Clean Energy Plan targeting us to be 100% renewable by 2050 with some interim goals. We have been working on the start of that work. We were slowed down a little bit with COVID, but during 2020, we've been out with the first round of community engagement. We've engaged with over 2,100 customers and citizens through an online survey, we've held a number of virtual focus groups with folks like United Partners for Human Services, Providence Neighborhood, South City, Alliance for Tallahassee Neighborhoods and others and other interest groups with the process and we're going to continue that process. Our consultant, GDS Associates, that includes two other companies working with them, South Face Energy Institute and ESP Media, have been helping us coordinate that and we're starting to move into the initial steps of the study work on the Integrated Resource Plan, which starts putting together the public comment we're getting, the, the system data that they have collected and modeling different alternatives to look for different paths forward and help us identify the most cost-effective and reliable path forward to meeting the renewable goal that the city has established. That has not stopped us though from taking actions during the past year as the study process has ramped up. As you know, our second solar farm went commercial last year. You made the decision to move all of our occupied buildings on the system to 100% solar under our solar subscription program, which made us the first Florida city to actually power our buildings from 100% solar. We've got over 2,000 residential customers as well as a number of commercial customers and some of our largest customers like FSU, FAMU and TCC enrolled in the solar subscription programs. We've seen, we continue to see a strong interest in rooftop solar through our net metering program and we actually saw about a three-time increase in the number of rooftop solar installations that subscribed under our net metering program. And Christian talked about some of the work that we're doing with electric vehicles, with the city's fleet. On the charging side, we're moving forward with the pilot charging stations that you authorized us to implement and doing the site studies and should have something on that in the next couple of months to share. And so we are continuing to move down the road towards the goal. The city has a long history of sustainability and, and focus on the environment and in this direction and we're continuing that work.
Thank you, Director Magiera. Moving to public safety, our overarching goal here that includes about six sub-priorities, but overarching goal here is to be safe, resilient and inclusive as a community. I'll touch on a few here. The first would be the number, we would, we would target after five years to have 45 neighborhoods engaged in our Neighborhood Watch Program process, or, or program. The better our partnerships with neighborhoods are, the more effective we can be at preventing crime. So in FY19, we were hovering around 32 neighborhoods, we've added four in the past year and now at 36, which is about a third of the target here. So again, trending positive here in neighborhood engagement. Reduction of vehicle burglaries by 15% is a target over five years. FY19, we were about 1,971. In the last year, we reduced, we saw a reduction by 329 incidents to 1,642. So that's, that's a 16.7% decrease, which is the sum of our target for five years, but the focus will remain on this effort. Reduction here leads to reductions in violent crime and you can see in prior years, those gains can change in, in, in a short period of time. So that will require continued vigilance over the five-year period. Finally, I'll touch on this quickly before turning it over to the chief. We do have a target for, to reduce violent crimes by 10% through our efforts of engaging community leaders and other law enforcement agencies. In FY19, the number of incidents was 1,341. Last year, it was 1,466. So I'm going to turn that, that represents an increase. I'm going to turn it over to Chief Revel to provide a little bit further detail on these metrics and other efforts.
Thank you, Christian, I appreciate that. Commission, good to see you all again. We're very excited about what's been going on in, in 2020 and the accomplishments that we've been able to achieve. We look to expand those and, and increase on those successes in 2021. As we talk about gun violence, you know, it's important to point out that, you know, those are directly related to our auto thefts. You know, we take guns every single day off the street and stolen guns continue to be a primary issue for us out of unlocked cars. So the more that we can get that message out, continue to get that message out, to lock your cars, take your guns inside, the more successful we're going to be in keeping those guns off the street. We are increasing our partnership with ATF and with the United States Attorney's Office where our NIBIN cases are concerned and just recently had a meeting with them on expanding those into surrounding counties. But because we know that a third of our violent crimes, especially related to homicides this past year, came from surrounding counties, so we're dealing with them also in, in that. We knew that there would be some, or we anticipated there would be some increases in violent crime with COVID and everybody being locked inside together. And we have seen those increases in, in areas such as aggravated battery, domestic battery, those type of things. But I do want to point out that we have had tremendous success in closing significant criminal cases, to the point where our investigative unit was recognized by the IACP as the investigative unit of the year for the entire world, basically. It's an international award, like I said, Dubai won it last year. So this is a tremendous achievement. It goes all the way back to 2018 when we had 100% clearance and we've continued to, under the leadership of Deputy Chief Larson and his investigative unit, continued that success to where we are staying at 85 to 90% clearance rates, which again is just unheard of when you're, when you're dealing with these types of crimes. So I appreciate the opportunity to, to speak with you. We are certainly looking forward to, you know, continuing the tradition of the police department. We will continue to work on violent crime reduction and partner with our LEO community partners. And again, again, because of your approval of the budget, we're definitely going to leverage technology with our LPRs and traffic cameras this year as well and you'll see a huge change in that and that's a, that's a, something we're very much looking forward to.
We have a couple more metrics to touch on, but certainly would be good, given the audience and the opportunity to talk about TPD's coordination with your other law enforcement partners, federal and state regarding potential issues this weekend, potential violence at the Capitol or just in Tallahassee. And so if, Chief, if you'll hold on the line, I would love for you to give us an update on that at the conclusion of this presentation.
Certainly, be happy to.
Thank you, Chief. And finally, in quality of life, you know, you can read the goal there is to be creative, inclusive and make sure we're protecting and promoting, promoting our community in beautiful spaces. A few targets here, one that probably is personally most exciting of all the targets, we assumed operations of the Riley Center this year and, and as you know, they established Soul Voices Workers Trail, sorry, Historical Market Trail, which created really a model for the future museum walk efforts. So on, on trend here for this initiative of establishing a historic district and museum walk, some pretty significant efforts and, and models developed. In terms of, another big element of our quality life in the community, as you know, is making sure folks are following, following code. And so we have set a 90% voluntary compliance with our code by property owners as a target over the five years. In FY19, that was roughly 60, a little more than 68% of voluntary compliance and over last year, that trended up to 79, over 79%. So that's an increase of 11% in voluntary compliance with, with our code and that's over, that's about half of our target. So very positive trends here and impact to our quality of life. And finally, I'm going to turn it over to Director Edwards to talk about our 100 parks by our 200th birthday. We added two last year and Director Edwards, do you want to take it from here?
Thank you, Christian. We are so excited about the new parks that are going to be coming through our park system in the next few years. As Christian mentioned, we got to a number 89 with the addition of the Cascades Overlook at Myers Park. Park number 90 is the Bond Linear Park, which will be completed very shortly here. And then in the next few months, we anticipate the opening of the Park View at Cascades, which is the amphitheater support space currently under construction in the North American Properties Building adjacent to Cascades Park, that's number 91. We're working with Blueprint on the Famy Way Skate Park for Park number 92. We're talking with our Stormwater Counterparts to look at the possibility of developing a disc golf course off Tremble Road in a stormwater retention area. And then we've got a parcel on Famy Way that we're planning to turn into a dog park and that'd be up to number 94. We're also working with Blueprint on a couple of other projects. Number 95 would be the Debbie Lycie Nature Preserve that we hope to open in FY23. The Mutsen Slough Trail is another trail and blueprint project that will open in 23. And then the two big projects that we're so excited about for our community, obviously the new senior center and the Canopy Development scheduled to be open in FY24, as well as the Market District Park in FY24. That gets us to 98. We continue to have ongoing conversations with Stormwater about the potential to look at adding park amenities at other stormwater facilities and we're also in conversations, obviously with neighborhoods through our, the neighborhood first planning process, looking at the potential for the addition of other neighborhoods scale parks as part of that process. And I'm confident that between those two, we will get up to that 100 parks by 2024.
All right, thank you, Director Edwards. So if I could stop sharing here. Yeah, that, that is, that represents a high-level summary of like City Manager God said, 15% of our targets. First year of execution on the plan that you directed us to adopt, engage the citizens for about a year to shape the targets and the goals and the priorities, the mission and the vision of the city in this plan. Thanks for the opportunity, myself and, and my colleagues are all here to take any direction or feedback or questions you might have.
Mr. Manager, no, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I'll, I'll be brief, but I do want to, to point out, as Christian said and I mentioned, this said and I mentioned, this is just a small portion of the targets that are included in the strategic plan that you approved. And some of them may feel like they're really in the weeds, if you will, but they are the foundation for how we measure our progress. And as you saw, most we're doing well in, some are challenging. And I think it's important that dashboard, the screenshots that you saw were from the dashboard that's public-facing, public sees it, we see it, we measure ourselves by it. And so we just wanted to give you kind of a feel for that without obviously going into all 100-plus. So thank you for the opportunity.
Before we get into a detailed conversation, I think now would be appropriate time for Chief Revel to provide an update real quick from a law enforcement perspective on, there's been a lot of talk in the national media about events that could or could not happen. And so I know that the police chief has been in constant communication. Chief, you want to comment and provide some guidance?
Certainly. We are, like you said, in collaboration with all of our partners, both federal, state, and local. We are meeting today to make sure that we have the resources that may be required for that. We do not have any specific intelligence, but you know, the national narrative that's going around, we're certainly aware of that and planning for that as well. So like I say, I can't tell you we have no specifics for our Capitol or for Tallahassee other than the general rallies that are being advertised on different media sources. But we are preparing, and we will be prepared, we are prepared. You know, we are, I've canceled days off for all of our officers starting Saturday, and that will go through Thursday of next week. So we will be fully staffed. Like I say, we are in coordination with the Sheriff's Department, FDLE, both universities, FHP, and FDLE, as well as the FBI in the coordination of our events. And then, of course, we are also including the Consolidated Dispatch and all of our city departments, as well as maybe need for different functions that they can provide. So all that to say, we are planning, we are prepared, and we will make sure that, you know, we are fully staffed to handle any issue that might arise.
Before we get into any detailed conversation outside of the strategic plan, do we have any specific questions on security of the city of Tallahassee and our community over the weekend leading up to inauguration? Everybody comfortable with where we are right now? Excellent. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
This is an incredible opportunity during the retreat for us to kind of have our conversations, talk about the issues that are important, answer any questions or ask any questions of the strategic plan and where we are. So I'll kick it off just by saying that I am proud of our strategic plan. I am proud that two years ago, we adopted the strategic plan, first time in many, 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 many years that the commission has done so. We get criticized for patting ourselves on the back every now and then, but I got to tell you, I'm proud of what we have done. We have a lot of work to do, no doubt about it, in every aspect of the strategic plan. We have just begun, but we have done some very good things, and I'm proud of our team. Without getting into any specifics, I'll turn to my colleagues, Commissioner Williams-Cox. We can start, I saw you first.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to, I have a question regarding the strategic plan, and I wanted to start with tempo. If Dr. Thomas is available, I don't know if he's on.
I'm here.
Okay. All right, Dr., you know, you know, it's hard to care about tempo and not see you. You know, when I think of tempo, I think of you. So I want to know, I saw the new location down on the South Side in the, in the shopping center. How has that location been working out for you?
Well, the construction is for some renovations and size started on the 29th of last month, and there's a 30- to 45-day window period to get that done. I can tell you the times I'm down there, we've even taken applicants using social distancing, they're pulling on the door literally, and we're really excited about that location. Logistically, it plays out well.
Good. I got excited when I drove up down there and saw it. I actually took a picture and posted it, so hopefully that drove some traffic there and you were able to get those, get those applications. I think that is really important that we understand that we have like, it's been determined there are 7,000 disconnected youth in our community. And I know by yourself, before you had staff, you got to, you know, about 1,000 of those on your own. So I know that with your staff, you all are doing tremendous work, and I'm very proud of that fact because we know that in order to have impact on poverty, we've got to have some education, which could include, you know, skills, getting some skills training and all that kind of stuff.
Absolutely.
So very, very excited about the work that you're doing. And you may have already stated this, but what are, what are our goals for this fiscal year 2021 and kind of where are we in that?
Well, when you look at our reduction rate, right now, we're averaging over 35 participants every month, new participants, and that's based on word-of-mouth referrals from our community partner with a doting community head and online applications. And so right now, we are ahead of the curve with that. We want to continue that to get people in, do the action plans with the seven phases of case management. Very excited about our progress, we're moving, and we're ahead of the progression line for engagement.
Commissioner, could I add to that answer? The goal in the strategic plan is to engage approximately 2,100 youth. Dr. Thomas and his team have engaged 1,200 youth. I think we all know that the more engagement that occurs, then you can't do it lightly, you have to do it thoroughly to make sure they remain on the right path and are fully served. Dr. Thomas has built his team, and if you don't mind, I'd like him to share who works on his team, because we've tried to create the capacity to get to 2,100 youth served, and I would like it to be more than that. I think it's possible, but that's ultimately the goal as it stands.
Thank you, City Manager Goad. We have a tempo youth services coordinator, Mr. Ariel McPherson. Mr. McPherson has a master's degree in social work, and that's certainly for our future endeavors of making sure that we have an accredited program that can take interns from both Florida State and Florida A&amp;M University in the social work sector. He worked diligently with making sure that we have three case managers that work with him day-to-day. Case managers actually do case management plans, seven phases of case management, with your cries of action plan that moving them from point A to point B within a calendar of years of time. There's constantly phone contact, emails, social media presence with case manager and their caseloads, building those relationships. And so for those numbers and those aspects of what we do, again, is moving the progression needle, and we feel excited about reaching our mark on time for the strategic plan.
Who else do you have? I assume you have.
With respect to the entire department, community services is comprised of also our Tallahassee Future Leaders Academy. As you know, Dr. Tara Holes led that initiative with respect to our summer youth program this summer. We have a human service analyst who assists her as well. We have someone who helps us with special projects, Miss Carol Dixon does that, I mean, you know Carol from her experience in the city. And again, you know, we had an award-winning summer youth program with TIFLA, first-ever e-learning model. You know, Deputy City Manager Barbara was certain that we were going to have a youth summer jobs program, this continued support of City Manager Goad and the rest of the city staff. And again, it was acknowledged by the mayor's conference, as Mayor Daley could speak to that aspect of it. So our department is moving. I think you're going to be very pleased when we do the opening with some of the aesthetics beauties that we have for the storefront, and we're really excited. And if you haven't ridden the Tempo Bus, I want to thank the Saffir's for that, with respect to partnering with us with communications. Make sure you take a ride on the Starmento Tempo Bus as well, and thank Ms. Baldwin for that as well.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas, for the work that you all are doing. It's really, I think it's really making a difference. I see that it is. I've attended some of those graduations, and there's some proud students and some proud parents who are attending those. My next set of questions will be for Abena with the housing piece. We've heard a lot this morning about affordable housing, and I wanted to come to you, Abena. I know that, you know, many may not know your resume, but you know, we know your resume, but we won't, we won't talk about that right now, and they can look you up. But I want to talk, want you to talk to us about affordable housing in regards to some of the strategies and plans that are in place. And I think some folks may not be aware as well about the rapid rehousing that you work with also. So if you could sprinkle a little bit of that in there and talk to us about the affordable housing piece, what the strategies and the goals are. And we heard this morning about someone who applied for a loan but was not able to receive it, so let us know what the criteria is for those who are interested in building affordable homes. What's the criteria for obtaining loans, as well as, you know, what are our goals for affordable housing in 2021? I can repeat some of that if you need it.
I think I might need it. I made a couple of notes. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
So I do invite everyone who is interested in learning more about our housing program to our newly designed website, talgov.com/housing. And we, as the city manager mentioned, and I did earlier as well, we try to enhance our toolkit with as many tools as possible because we know that the solution is complex. And we, as a city government, want to create an environment that fosters the creation of units, but we may not directly be always involved in it. And so our programs range from some of the things that I didn't mention earlier, you all took action on earlier in 2021, the Community Land Trust Model, where we partnered with the Leon County and the Tallahassee Lenders Consortium to construct homes and keep it affordable for, in perpetuity in a trust. That new initiative takes a lot of effort to build up, but we're well on our way. Land has already been donated, and there are permitting processes that have already begun for possibly eight units in 2021 to get started. And as you know, we have a target of 34 for the strategic plan horizon. We also incentivize private developers to build affordable housing throughout the city. In certain zip codes, it would be more appropriate for our inclusionary housing ordinance, where we have a requirement of at least 10% reserve for affordable units. One of the major developments that fits that criteria is the Canopy Development. We have a strategic plan target of 67 units over the five-year horizon. And as of December, 10 of those have already been sold, and we have six under construction in January. And so that has really picked up over the last year, and we're really excited about that opportunity to add more units. We haven't had that opportunity in a very, very long time since the inclusionary housing ordinance is in place. I think a lot of people also don't know that we have incentives for private developers that don't require the city or the public funding the entire project. We do so through things like our water and sewer incentive program. And I'll just highlight one private development that you may have driven past and may not have noticed is the Lafayette Gardens over in Lafayette near the moon. And that's one that, again, privately led, they took advantage of our water and sewer incentive. They're expecting to open 96 units. If their doors are not already open, I know that that's happening really soon. And the price range for those units are between $300 and $900 a month, so they absolutely fit within the criteria of providing affordable units for low and moderate income residents. You also took some important action over the summer with the CRA infill. We went through a stakeholder process of engaging CRA district residents to identify the type of housing that they would want the city to sponsor in those city-owned lots within the CRA districts. And there are not that many, but you pinpointed six that you wanted to build. And so this year, in 2021, we also expect to be adding six new units on city-owned parcels. You approved the consolidated plan in December, which is our strategy to HUD. We try to make it as comprehensive as possible, but it is a plan that is focused on the funding that HUD provides to the city as an entitlement community, which is limited. But we do develop a strategy around that, and we try to leverage local resources as well. We have been very strategic about investing more resources in that capacity, and folks can go to, again, talgov.com/housing. We have the plan updated there where you can see the kind of targets that go beyond, you know, what is possible to even highlight in the strategic plan that's already so dense. But we took an important action with your approval of that plan to focus on neighborhoods that have gone through our neighborhood first planning process. And so as those strategies emerge, whether through the CRA or in coordination with the Neighborhood Affairs, we designated resources to assist neighborhoods to advance their housing targets as well. And so those numbers will range, but I think they can move forward at a pace that makes sense for the respective neighborhoods that are included in our plan. You also approved an affordable housing revolving loan fund for construction, and I made a note of your question about the criteria. So that's a $1 million fund that didn't exist before, that you just activated in the summer. If all of that $1 million is engaged by small developers, you could have five to six units under construction at any time. The criteria for that is smaller private development organizations, they could be private or nonprofit. The expectation is that, of course, an agency may not have all the money to build a home that is why they would be looking for a loan. However, they demonstrate some administrative and legal capacity to perform the work and to be able to repay the loan because it is a revolving fund, and they demonstrate some ability to manage that risk. There is, it is designed to be somewhat flexible, and I think as the program evolves, with just six months underway, it can continue to be enhanced to fit the needs of our community. But that tool is a new one that has been added into our toolkit, and that we're, we want to do more promotion and advertising of that for more smaller developers in particular to be able to participate. And I did take note of the public speaker, and we are in direct conversation with him. He's aware of the various issues of concern that we had, and we're committed to working directly with him to ensure that he has an application that can be approved. The initial denial does not, it's not a stamp of permanent denial, and so we're committed to working with him as well. Commissioner, did I miss another question you had?
Rapid rehousing.
Rapid rehousing, thank you. So part of our strategy for housing, and really crosses over to human services as well, is to create pathways out of homelessness and to work our hardest with our community partners like the Big Ben COC to make homelessness rare, to make it brief and nonrecurring. This is the first time in probably the history of the city's funding relationship with HUD that we've received so much for emergency solutions. And that's directly tied to COVID, where we know homeless individuals are most impacted or most vulnerable because they cannot shelter safely in place. So over the last six to eight months, the city has committed over $1.4 million for rapid rehousing. In the past, it's been somewhere like zero. We are working directly with agencies, again, like the Big Ben COC, with BBHC, Big Ben Homeless Coalition, and all the other service providers to rapidly get homeless individuals housed. And the funding includes the administration, but the majority of that is in direct payments for deposits, you know, housing applications, any rent that needs to be paid in order to move somebody in as quickly as possible. And that's on top of all the other operational and sheltering services that are already in place in our community. But we know, and as we talked about at the workshop, we don't want to focus on just sheltering people in one place, we want to get them housed because that is, we believe, the solution to homelessness is housing. So we've injected more money than we ever have in that effort this year, thanks to your leadership and approval of the funds as they've come in and directing us in that way.
Okay. And one final question, because I know this is under your purview as well, is code enforcement. How are we doing in that arena? We've heard a speaker today mention about code enforcement, so can you just kind of talk to us a little bit about what the strategies are there and how it's going?
Yeah, we're really excited about our code enforcement team. They, about a year ago, were reclassified as resilience officers, and that really focused their attention on public safety and empowering residents to take action in their respective neighborhoods. They're being much more proactive, they're going door-to-door, they're engaging directly They're engaging directly with property owners and renters to solve problems. And our goal, as stated in the strategic plan, is to reach 90% voluntary compliance, which is, is going to be a hard one, but we're really eager and excited to be working on, on that particular initiative. We have traditionally anywhere between four or five code enforcement officers. We know that that is an area that can continue to be enhanced. And I'm very grateful for the support of Deputy City Manager. And the city manager, we're actually hiring right now for five code enforcement trainees, which is an entry level position that allows them to grow and learn about the process and eventually, you know, move through the system to become code enforcement officers and then resilience officers. So we're, we're beating the street all the time. We're working hard on, on a lot of those initiatives to make sure that they're voluntary compliant, even as we balance also the stricter tools that we have in our toolkit on, in the enforcement side to make sure that those bad actors and those that are a little bit harder to resolve, they also have a different incentive to, to take action. Later, towards the end of last year, you all also approved a code enforcement amnesty program. We believe that that's a really great tool to set us off strong in this new year, to align cases that are decades old, frankly, and to begin to energize property owners and communities to start to do something about cases. And so that's been a, a great tool to sort of get us in the door to start having the conversations with neighborhoods. That applicant, that process is getting started right away in January. And so folks will be getting information about how to take advantage of that amnesty program. And we will move swiftly to ensure that we can address any backloads and backlog of cases as well as just add more individuals on the streets to directly engage with property owners.
Now, if, if individuals don't, or businesses or whoever, don't come into compliance, even with all of that, what, what is the next step? Do you, you, I know there are fines, but are, are liens placed?
Yes, yes. Our traditional process includes a period of voluntary compliance where we work with them, but there is a time limit to that and we progress through a hearing at the co-board or code magistrate. There's an order that comes from that group that dictates the, the time limit and the fine amount. And after a period of inaction, we have the opportunity to apply liens. We work closely with the city attorney's office. They're participating in all of our, our hearings and our case management. And we have other tools if it goes beyond that, including pursuing other legal action and in some of the more egregious cases, foreclosure. So we have, and we also try to connect property owners to financial resources as well because sometimes it is a, a lack of financial ability to address the cases. And there's also sometimes legal issues with property ownership and, and probate laws. And so we try to connect individuals with whatever resources to get out of the, the cycle of deterioration of those properties.
Okay, thank you, Abana. You're doing an outstanding job in my view and for what I'm hearing from folks that are benefiting from what you're doing. And I'm glad to hear that the denial is not a, a permanent thing and that you're working with the applicant to try to get to where we need to get to. Thank you again very much. If I, if I may, I have, I want to go to, go to chief. I, I think he's, he's still on. Chief, Chief Revel.
Yes, ma'am.
Let me just say, let me just say, congratulations on the first year, I think.
Thank you.
I noticed in the news recently that there was a miscalculation of crime rate in our period. And it was that, that one, one of your, one of the collectives, one, one of the members of the collective, is that, is that, does that have any impact on, on the crime rate as calculated here for the city of Tallahassee? Since they are in the city and if so, what is that recalculation? When will we get the new results?
Yes, yes, ma'am. We've notified FLE.
Hold on. Hold on, your audio.
Chief, I think we may need to mute the other lines. Chief, give us just a moment here.
Okay.
Chief? No. Chase? Are the other lines muted?
Yes, sir, they are.
I'll give it a try.
Can you hear me now? No. I don't know.
They're facing inside out. It'd probably be great for him to.
Can you hear me now?
No.
No, chief, we're getting a lot of feedback from you. But let's, I think Deputy Chief Larson can actually answer these questions. Chief, stand by.
Please, sir.
And while you're coming, I'll give you my, my last question as well, because I don't know if that's you or the, or the chief. We, we hear a lot, I, I hear a lot about the TPD budget. And I, I think that if, if people were aware of what is included in the budget, it might be helpful to understand why the budget is what it is. It's not just for officers to parole, you know, patrol streets and do stuff, but it, it supports some community-based programs and items as well. So if someone could just speak to, to the fact that the, the police department budget is not just for enforcement.
Yes, ma'am. For the first question in reference to the UCR, Florida A&amp;M University had basically put in, as far as vehicle burglaries, that they had 1,501, when really they had one, which substantially impacted the percentages of crime in, in the area. So we, we do see in general with UCR, property crimes are, are obviously much more prevalent than personal crimes, violent crimes. And so when those numbers, you know, go down substantially, like you see with the auto burglaries, it does have a great impact on what our overall crime rate is. And in saying that, so the same thing, if there's a 1,500 increase, it does the same, not to the, the level, but again, it's, it does increase the UCR crime rate substantially if there is some miscue like that. I think FLE and both FAMU know about that and most likely are, are going to change that. So they'll, they'll come back. This was only a semi-annual, so that's the first six months of the year. And so in the yearly, that will be corrected.
Okay. As reported by WCTV, I'm looking back at Monica Casey, they did a calculation with that correction and showed a reduction of 18% in the crime rate. Was that correct, Monica? Okay. All right.
That's good, man.
I'm, I'm sorry, Monica. For the record in the media, your name and address for the record, please.
No, Monica Casey, WCTV.
As far as the budget itself goes, I'm not the perfect person to talk about this, but we perform a variety of services, which just don't include proactive patrol, but victim services, our victim advocates, all the investigative pieces and parts that go into solving crimes, forensic units, just a, a majority of, of that. And a majority of the budget is related to those, those services. It is not specifically for gear or, you know, devices, things that we buy, but a majority of our budget is, is related to the services that we provide.
Okay.
We, we might have a breakdown of that. Robert Wigan, our Director of Resource Management, he tracks that closely. That did come up in some of the briefings you asked about that. Some of the commissioners asked about that. Commissioner, if you want us to, to go there, I'm going to look at Robert. I can see him on the screen. Robert, do we have any graphics that would may help illuminate the breakdown of TPD's budget?
Yeah, I've, I've two graphics. One is a, you know, by department breakdown and, and Deputy Chief covered those areas pretty, pretty exactly. You know, K-9 unit, the cops unit is probably about 20% of our sworn officers. And so that's very focused on community policing. You know, he mentioned the general narcotics and drug interdiction and criminal and career criminal units, violent crime response teams. So that, that, those primary law enforcement activities are, are pretty diverse and, and much, go much beyond traffic enforcement and, and, but also then over, overlap with patrol because that's where visibility in the community is happening. We also, as we enter this fiscal year, know that, you know, with COVID, with challenges in revenue at the state and federal level, that are going to impact us locally, how precious our dollars are in the general fund. And so we've been looking at our other communities that we compare ourselves to. More credit to WCTV, I think they were just mentioned, but they did a comparison, you know, maybe six months ago to look at some communities and see how we compare to Chattanooga, Mobile, Savannah. We've done the same thing for Gainesville and Lakeland and Pensacola and, and the 10 municipal cost comparison communities. And, and, and the budget is, you know, i- i- is precious, but it's varied, it's directed, it's really proactive enforcement. When you look at us as a percent of the general fund, we're right in the median, in a 30% to 40% range of the general fund. Our police spending per capita, that's per person across the community, is very competitive. We're actually in the lower quartile of those 10 or 11 communities. And then our, our police spending, I, I think land area is one thing we always look at. It's probably one of the lowest in, in those 10 areas. So again, I, I think we'll be bringing that information back to you this year as we talk about the budget because we know how well we need to balance law enforcement with human services, with parks and recreation, with housing, so that we're, we're really putting our money where our mouth is with our priorities. And if there's any specific detailed questions, I can bring those, those draft numbers up, but I, I will be bringing that information back as we go through the budget process this year.
Okay, thank you. I, I think it's very important because we, we, we hear it a lot. And I, I, I think that it's important for our citizens, our residents to know how their money is being spent in law enforcement. And so I think it's important that we do bring it back and that we do put it in a place where it can be referred to either online or put it in a utility bill or whatever, to let, let folks know how their good tax dollars are being spent to keep our community safe and, and, you know, doing, doing the job to protect and to serve. Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, I think the audio with the chief has been worked out if we need him to comment any further.
If, I, I have my questions answered, but chief, feel free.
No, I think, can you hear me?
No, same thing. Thank you, chief.
Chief Revel, Deputy Chief Larson, and to your two colleagues as deputy chief. Thank you for this year, the new leadership that we have in the department. And I want you to know how much we truly appreciate the men and women of Tusk Police Department. This could be an interesting weekend, we don't know. And it's just a stark reminder how much we appreciate you.
Anything else? I'm done. Thank you, Mr. Porter.
Thank you. And thank you to everyone for these presentations and, and the materials. It certainly has been a really crazy year for, for all of us. I think that we have done an excellent job adapting to COVID. You know, I just concluded a lot of orientation meetings with our departments, which have been excellent and, and super informative. And I've been super happy to see the way that we have adapted and modernized and really we were, we were ready to do that. A lot of those were projects already kind of in the works that were sped up. And I have not heard of an incident where, you know, any of our, there, where there's been an interruption of services, you know, because of COVID. And I'm really proud of that. And I'm, I'm also very proud of our city for the fact that we have not cut off anyone's power or utilities. I think that's a blessing because of our public utilities. That is certainly an issue we need to deal with, you know, moving forward. There's a lot of challenges still ahead of us, but I'm proud of that. And to, to mirror some of the comments that have already, already been made, seeing our community come together with, with the masks and, and TMH and all the service providers and community groups has been amazing also. And I think that, you know, now more than ever, we gotta, we gotta keep that up. We gotta keep working together and hopefully the, the end is in sight. But still, we are, things are getting worse before it seems like they are going to get better. And so I'm glad that we have, I hope that we are in the position, we're relying on state and federal support that we badly need, and hopefully that, that support is coming. So I wanted to just open with that. I do have a few personal priorities that I, I think align with our strategic plan priorities that I wanted to ask some questions about. Obviously, I wasn't directly part of the strategic planning process. I'm really happy with the progress we've made. The fact that we have a strategy, a strategic plan is a necessary and, and great accomplishment. I agree that, you know, it is, the way I see it is there's still some, some improvements, some refinements that I would like to see to make sure that we are connecting, that there's continuity between the different plans and between even other, you know, the nonprofit funding. And there's a lot that we do, you know, and, and we know that, and making sure that we are operating consistently. You know, I think that this is, and I think Commissioner Williams-Cox set us out on this tone, we have to be brutally honest with ourselves and the, where we've come as a city and where progress still needs to be made. I think that in its current form, it is a starting point, but there, we've discussed that it needs to be a living document. I think that we do need some more focus, some more measurable improvements, outcomes that are ambitious. Although I'm happy to hear about some of our targets and that we're reaching them, that tells me that maybe we need to be, have an even higher standard for ourselves. You know, if we're a year in, reaching certain goals, that we can make those goals even more ambitious. Some of the, so that's something that I, I'm curious to hear what my colleagues think. And I know that this is a review and it, it is a living document. You know, for, for example, you know, the, the impact on poverty, our goal to be a leading community partner that actively connects residents to resources that remove economic and social barriers, I think that we need to do better than that. I mean, I think that our goal for our impact on poverty needs to be, you know, to reduce poverty to, you know, with, with specific metrics. To me, that is just not an acceptable standard for, I think, what, for the need that there is and the potential that our city has, which I believe is our goal. I, so, you know, th- those are some comments I have about some of these, some of these metrics. I, I had a lot of questions to staff. I know there were last minute questions that, that I got answered, and so I will follow up with you offline. And I, I do appreciate that, you know, and I would like to see moving forward, if we are going to really use the strategic plan, it's something that I would like to see us go through every single point, not necessarily at the annual retreat, but maybe a separate workshop, because if it's going to be our North Star, you know, and I know we've got the, the dashboard, but I think it's important that we are constantly, and I know that y'all, some of us are, you know, with the Office of Strategic Innovation, but constantly returning to this document. Because I, that is where, you know, plans fail. And so I think that that's, that's certainly going to be important. I know that there are, the city manager's office, correct me if I'm wrong, I was fortunate enough to study under Dr. Gary Van Landingham, who is an expert in this, was the director of OPAGA. I know he's been in touch with, with the city at other points about a partnership between the ASKU School and, and himself and assisting with this moving forward. I know that this is a huge lift, this performance management, these, these outcomes, it is a lot of time and energy and money and data for local government to take on. But if we don't have that data and those specific targets and goals and outcomes, which some of our goals are more specific than others, but especially because of COVID. which some of our goals are more specific than others, but especially because of COVID and the economic impacts that that's going to have on our community and it is already having, we need to make sure that we are so thoughtful about how we're spending money and that we know that this is a great place to start. But I do look forward to working on, especially as we're working on these other plans, making sure that we have the best resource possible to set us up for success. As far as COVID and a couple of items that we, not that we skipped over, but that we've, we're going to talk about now. As far as the events, I agree with Commissioner Matlow. I would like to see, I wouldn't be comfortable moving forward unless I felt like I could see the plan come back to the commission. This is something that I feel like, you know, it's, I can't get a whole poll on how the city feels about it, but in discussions and in Facebook posts I've made, people feel, I know you know very strongly about this, and I just want to feel like I can in good conscience say that, because I do think that there are COVID-safe ways to do these events, but there are also ways that this could go terribly wrong. And so I would like, I'm comfortable if we can, if it can come back to us at some point. I would like to discuss the landlord risk mitigation fund, just briefly, and whether we have any more of an update on that and sort of any more funds that are being identified and where, just where we're at with that process.
Abena, would you like to comment on where we are? Obviously, that is in motion, very new, and Abena has the latest information.
Sure. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, we're on the roll now. Yes, Commissioners, you approved the creation of the fund in December, and staff has been working around the clock over the holidays, no break, to make sure that we can get it up and running as fast as possible. We're developing an online portal that we hope to go live in about a week and a half. We already have the structure in place to, with a consultant that's helping to develop that. It would be embedded in our existing neighborly app, which is what our department uses to solicit applications for most of our programs. The goal has been to keep it very simple so that it is accessible for small mom and pop style landlords, those that own just a few units, but those that might be the most impacted with loss of rent. But the program is, the fund is a program and the view is long term. We want to, and we think it is best used as a tool that can be leveraged by multiple partners as they serve vulnerable clients and as they engage with landlords that are willing to partner with the city to keep housing stability at the forefront, even as we clear the hurdle of COVID and the impact that it's given. So that application will be live. The $250,000 initially will come from our Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which is the most flexible source of funding we have right now. But we also want to make sure it's leveraged with previous care funding. And so where an applicant might be able to leverage those funding, we want to explore that, as well as with our rapid rehousing as well, because those folks that are either right at the verge of homelessness or are already homeless that needs to be stably housed, the Landlord Risk Mitigation Fund is designed to also incentivize housing reentry or those that are coming back into a stable housing. So we're making progress, we're moving as fast as we can to make sure that the application is live in the coming weeks for landlords.
Thank you. So my understanding then of, you know, kind of where we're at with that, that is intended for use for people who are looking for affordable housing, correct? Not people who are currently in their homes?
It does both. So landlord that enrolls in the program has, is joining the program and saying that, or taking advantage of additional security for tenants that they already leased to, that might experience financial crisis, such as what COVID is doing for residents now. And so if you already have tenants leased in your unit and you know that your tenant has experienced financial crisis for some reason or the other, they have not received any of the funding from the previous rental assistance that's been in place, and you agree to not evict tenants and work with them, then that landlord can file a claim in this fund. But we also want to invite new landlords into it because some landlords do have vacant units and they might be a little bit more hesitant to lease to vulnerable tenants. And vulnerable includes those that may have already been evicted, and we know that that creates a significant, almost insurmountable hardship to getting new housing, as well as those that are homeless now and may be less than ideal candidates for private landlords. So we want to do both. We know that in the current circumstances with COVID, that there are current landlords that if they had some level of assurance, they would keep their tenants stably housed. But we also want to attract those landlords that have vacant units.
Okay, so I know that this is not a rental assistance program, correct me if I'm wrong. Ideally, if this program is totally successful, then none of the money gets spent because, I mean, is that correct? Because everyone has, is able to pay their rent, the landlords don't need to, you know, don't need an insurance fund to back up rent that's unpaid, is that correct?
In the traditional sense of a fund like this, that is correct. Most of these funds, and there are few that are set up around the nation and in other, actually other countries, they're set up in the pre-COVID world. And so indeed, the mark of success has been that most of the funds don't end up being claimed because there is a partnership and a wraparound service that really supports landlords. Oftentimes, small landlords are out on their own, kind of renting, not having some of the legal support even for mediation, or just having case management support for tenants that are in crisis. And so the fund works really well because it is designed to partner landlords with a service, a network of service providers that go hand in hand together and really support them throughout the leasing process. In our context and in the post-COVID world, we know that there will be landlords who might need the assurance of some of the lost rent paid to ensure that they do not proceed with, you know, the worst case being an actual eviction, but just also entering into a partnership with all these other service providers might make the difference for some landlords who might feel like they're left out by themselves in this current environment. So we expect that there will be some claims initially, but traditionally, it is, it is most successful where there are not any need for the financial claims.
Okay, thank you. So I think this is a great program. I think that it's something that we need. I think that hopefully, when we are learning more about COVID, more COVID assistance that we might be receiving as a city, I would like to see if you have thoughts moving forward. I think this is a great program, but I'm worried that it's not going to really meet the need that we are likely to face with people being evicted and that kind of, and I know that that's something that the city just simply, we do not have the resources on our own to pay everyone's rent. Do we have any updates on the new COVID Relief Act and what potential resources we might have for either rental assistance through the city or the county or some federal program? Do we have any update on that?
Let me start with that, Commissioner. I'll largely tell you what I've shared via email, but I think it's a, it's a great question. So the federal money that is flowing down that comes from the latest act at the end of December, there was $25 billion applied at the federal level for rental assistance and utility assistance. That will flow a little differently than the CARES Act money, but similarly. Ultimately, based on our local population, the county will be a direct recipient of that. I talked directly to the county administrator. They will administer the rental assistance and utility assistance, much like they did the CARES Act money. The criteria is different. It's set forth by the U.S. Department of Treasury. It does have some barriers in there, but, and I believe, Abena's going to correct me if we know something better, that the amount was potentially $9 million for our area, which is a lot. I think that's substantial, and I think that probably goes a long way to the, to addressing the issue we have. So, but it would be administered by the county, the city would not have a role in that administration. Ideally, the city would potentially be a recipient as a utility provider to address some of our needs. But at this point, the county would have certified their application and then ultimately be a recipient of those funds, which we understand to be about $9 million. Abena, have you heard anything different than that?
No, you summed it up really well, City Manager. We are waiting for the formal letter, but the application was yesterday, I believe, was the deadline for the county to submit their information, and I believe they're on track. So we'll know very soon, but it is substantial and they will, will of course continue to collaborate with them as we've been doing and point citizens in need that way. I think it's helpful to have it streamlined from one direction.
Okay, thank you. Related to that, you know, people have brought up today and before then, this issue of affordable housing. This is a national crisis, it is a local crisis, it has only been exacerbated by the, by COVID. And who knows when we will and how we will rebound from that and recover from that. So that is something that, especially knowing what we know about it being a public health issue and holistic issue that is impacted by many factors and impacts many factors, and it is going to be an iterative process to make progress on that end. I'm glad to hear in some of my conversations with you, Abena, on my orientation tour, improvements with, you know, our code enforcement and building those partnerships, because that is a huge issue. People not having either the resources or are not aware of their responsibilities as homeowners or renters to maintain their properties. It is cheaper to restore affordable housing and maintain it than it is to build new housing. And so that is definitely something, you know, empowering our neighborhood associations to, to, you know, to organize and get the word out with each other and support each other. There's a lot of steps that we have taken and need to take, that we do have a lot of programs that I think are great and helpful. And we have this issue that we all know of the huge percentage of renters who, you know, and that complicates it, they're not necessarily eligible for the same kinds of programs. So, you know, I know that that's an issue that we're dealing with. This is, I know, a priority for the city and it's especially a priority for me. I think that strengthening or revisiting our inclusionary housing, investing in the community land trust, I think we're heading in the right direction. But I do think that we need to be more, I would like to see us be more aggressive about what we are going to do, because I feel like even what I'm seeing, if we reach our goals, it's still not enough. It's still, and I, and I just think that we have to, this has to be a major priority. And I look forward to being a partner on this issue, whether it's investing. I mean, one thing that we know public housing does reliably is house people. It's not perfect, but there are a lot of alternatives, a lot of creative solutions that other cities are considering and implementing that I would like to see us consider as well. You know, I was thinking about buying a house and I can't even afford some of the houses that are, we consider affordable housing. I would not be approved for a loan to buy those houses. And so we have to address this issue. Yeah, I know, I know that we are. I, I just, I really think that we need to be even more intentional and do whatever it takes because it is, it's a crisis and it's a health crisis. I hear from a lot of people, and I know my colleagues do as well, about the homeless population and encampments. I myself have two homeless people who come to my house regularly sometimes to ask for money, and I've had to say, you know, please reach out with, you know, I would love to help you, but I'm not comfortable with, you know, and other people aren't either. And that's, it is a safety hazard for some. So we've got to address this issue. Back to the South Side Action Plan and whatever, I fully support the conversation about annexation and having that discussion. I think that's, I'm curious to dig deeper into that and, but I do think we have had a representation problem. It doesn't make sense to me why some, you know, why Summerbrook is in the city and some residents in the South Side, you know, cannot vote in the city elections. There, I know that's a, there's a lot to that, but I'm, I was glad to see that included in our materials. I do think that as we really commit ourselves to that, you know, what the South Side needs is really what every neighborhood needs, you know, a livable community, affordable housing, safety, sense of place, these are just things that every single person wants and needs. And so although the, the needs are also unique and specific because of decades of neglect and unique community characteristics, I think that in general, moving away from sprawl, moving away from auto dependency, moving away from big box stores and some of the economic incentives that we know now are outdated, do not produce the results that we thought they would, is outdated planning models that don't produce the results we thought they would. I would like to see us, you know, really, sounds so cheesy, but reach for the stars, you know, and because I believe that our citizens deserve that and that we can do that. I think a part of that, that I would like to see moving forward with both the SSA and whatever planning and just our agenda in general, is I can only imagine how much work goes into preparing all these materials and the reports and the agendas. I know that it is a lot of work for you. It's a lot of work for me to read, but that is what I signed up for, that's just part of the job. What I would like though, and I would like to hear, you know, feedback on any of this, is right now, the way that our, some of our agenda materials are set up is, you know, we have, you know, staff recommendation and then other commission direction typically is what it looks like. I would really love it if there's a way that we could include alternatives, you know, not just, and I'm not asking to get rid of the staff recommendation, but you know, I do think that we need to be thinking critically about what other cities are doing because there are different perspectives. And I think it's helpful for our residents and for, for me as a commissioner to know, okay, have we considered alternatives? Have we, or do we just, is, you know, so that we're confident in the decisions that we're making on behalf of residents. So that is something that, you know, is stressed in good, in good planning and management and is considering alternatives. And so I would like to see if that could be, at least with some of our major projects included. So whether it's, you know, option one, nothing changes. Option two, we consider, and I think you know what I mean because it's, I'm not inventing any new idea, it's, I think, a standard thing. But with some of these projects, I would just like to see more options. And I think that as I, as we continue to meet, I know that I'll learn more about the thought process that goes behind. And so I know that I'm not a part of every conversation that you have before those materials come to us, but I would like to see that. And I think an example of that is even the housing workshop that we had, is that we were really just presented with kind of one, one path to move forward. And while I trust our staff to present that, I do think that we need to be presented with, in some cases, with more options and alternatives, especially when it comes to something that is requiring our immediate attention, where we don't really have time to say, I'm going to go back and spend two weeks researching this or whatever. So whenever possible, that is something that, that I would like to see. So those are really my comments. I am really excited about this year. I think that COVID, as devastating as it has been, is really giving us an opportunity to rethink, re-strategize, and is bringing a lot of issues to the forefront that we've known were always there, but. But I know that, I feel confident that we are going to address these issues head on and I look forward to doing that. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, pro Tim.
Thank you, sir. First off, I just want to congratulate all of our department heads who are meeting or exceeding their goals up, up to this date. That's encouraging. I don't want to leave anybody out, but Star Metro, Fleet, our utility, Deputy Larson, congratulations on the ICP award. That, that's all good news to celebrate. One question. As we meet goals, some of the goals that seem like we were going to meet early, is there any indication that we would expand them moving forward or we just concentrate on other goals after that point?
Yeah, Commissioner, that's a great question. I, I think that, that's something we should explore. My recommendation, and I think it's consistent on how we've managed historically, as we get comfortable about our ability to achieve goals, you should expand those. But there may be some limit because it could be diminishing returns or you may want to focus priorities elsewhere. But I do think there were a lot of targets and goals developed for the strategic plan, some of which we had no baseline. We really didn't have a feel for our ability to achieve. I, I think it probably would be a good exercise to revisit some and say, you know, we've, we've really demonstrated the ability and capacity to, to achieve more and, you know, maybe not because maybe that's not a priority area we want to hold where we are. I thought the example of the reduction in car burglaries was a good one. That will probably take all of our effort to keep that number low because that's not, you know, you don't just achieve it and let it go. You have to continue to work at it. So that might be one where you leave it where it is because there's an expectation that the continued effort would still be there. But I think, I think it would be appropriate to expand some of the targets that we've set and that we now have more experience with our ability to achieve.
Okay. Yeah, now you can take the lead on that. I was just wondering what the process would be. It seems like we are approaching, you know, some goals in a year or two, which we set in four years to do. A second question along that line. Do we have any indication of goals that we're falling behind on? And I, I know some of our goals, I don't think we maybe had enough clarity on, such as, I think it was a mild access to a fresh food source, if that meant a community farm or, or an actual grocery store and that sort of thing. And that seems to be probably one of the most challenging goals that, that just sparked my interest of how do we get there? That's a hard thing to do just as a government body. But do we have any indication of goals that we're struggling with that weren't presented in the material? Or do you feel comfortable across the board on the strategic plan, we're headed in a good direction?
I, I feel comfortable with our direction. We are not on pace with all the goals though, and I think if we were, that would probably be an indication that the bar was set too low. In some are challenging just beyond our control. I, I think we presented today that violent crime actually went up, not down. That's a key goal that we have. We had, had gone down for some period. What we know is in the first six months of last year, actually crime went down. So that we were headed in the right direction and then things changed over the summer. Actually, I think the first quarter of this year, so we're, we're a little out of sync because that, that reporting goal is on a fiscal year, which ends in September. So we've already had a quarter basically behind us. The trend is, is better again, but that's a good example, one that I think we will constantly struggle to achieve. And so I would not suggest that we're, you know, hitting home runs on all of these, but generally the direction is good. I, I will tell you from a management point of view, the department directors, I think probably, as, as much as you don't want to, you know, get the report card type thing, they appreciate it because it focuses their efforts. They understand what their goals need to be and how they can achieve them. I think Ashley Edwards, our Director of Parks and Recreation did an excellent job today. I can tell you, she did not invent the goal of 100 parks by 2024. I, I think we can thank the mayor for that one. But as, as you saw, she totally had a plan and, and, and I thought it was great and she identified that at the current pace, we're going to be too short and so we've still got to fill that gap. So I, I feel comfortable in our direction, but there are ones that I think it's putting, that we're going to have to put more emphasis on.
Okay. And yeah, and I just want to highlight some of our chief priorities, a lot of we've already put out there. Obviously, the violent crime and, and the shootings in our community continue to be a top priority. I, I know we can't depend on, I shouldn't say depend, we, we can't, the police department can't solve that problem. Yeah, you know, they can investigate, they can react, they can deter some aspects, they can displace. But when we look at our community-wide goals on, on poverty and some of these root causes and interacting with the youth, Dr. Kimball Thomas is doing a great job, but the truth is there's just so many disconnected youth out there and I don't think we necessarily have enough resources. We have a lot of great programs in our community that are working with youth. You look at things like DYG and people who are engaged and really bringing people in and, and putting them on a proper path. But we know as long as our poverty rate is at the rate it's at, we may never have enough resources to connect with every youth who, who may go down the wrong path. So I think when we look through this year, we need to, to stay focused on our poverty rate collectively and how we impact that. And I don't think that's a goal that falls on the shoulders of anyone department. It becomes citywide and really community wide. You know, city can't do it itself, the county can't do it itself. We need our nonprofit partners at the table. We need our university partners at the table. We need to really just work collectively to, to find a goal of that percentage of people limiting poverty because that will have a direct impact on a lot of our crime issues. The next thing I wanted to thank the youth climate activists for coming today. It seems we have a change in leadership at the federal government, so we may believe in climate change once again, which is great for our country. The city of Tallahassee has taken a leadership role in establishing the Clean Energy Plan and look forward to Mr. McGarrett's work on that. I wanted to go back to the COVID event. And this may be a question for Ashley or Ms. Barber, but do we have any, we opened up events during the fall, the sporting events and that sort of thing. Do we have an idea of what the attendance, the max attendance on an event that we set out rules for? A tennis match is at 100 people? Like how many people are coming to what we're already working through?
Just for clarity, those that were part of our Parks and Recreation programs?
Right. I mean, I believe we canceled pretty much every other.
Right. Exclusive of like the university type activities, just what we're in control of.
Exactly.
Yeah, Ashley's the best one. Ashley, you want to take a stab at that?
Yes, sir. We, we did cancel all of our events throughout the COVID pandemic, but the, just to kind of give you a general idea to your point about the different size crowds at events. Obviously, a tennis match or a softball tournament or a baseball game, baseball tournament, those are typically influenced by the, the numbers of teams and the number of participants. And, you know, everybody brings a couple of parents, maybe grandma. And, and so there's, there's ways that we have handled that within our leagues that we've re, that we did start to operate this fall by limiting the number of spectators. So we've told kids, you can only bring one or two, depending on the circumstance, whether it was an indoor activity, an outdoor activity. So there's ways that we can work with the event planners to limit the size of the, of the spectator crowd. Obviously, the large scale events, and we've seen, you know, some of the ones that the counties run with the, the football, the football games that were held at Duke Campbell Stadium and then also the cross-country races, they also had protocols in place to limit what could have normally been, you know, tens of thousands of people attending. So I think it really does vary event by event. And obviously the ones that are smaller in scope, like an athletic event or a tournament, that, that we can manage that more easily, there, there's a difference in those and these large-scale public events that we see in the community. And there are ways to limit the way, to keep people from staging, to keep people from having to stand in line, but, but yet limit the access that we have just for the broad numbers of people just to come without any control in place. And frankly, when there's situations where you can't really limit that, those are when the events have to be modified. If, if we see that there's a parade, the parade's a great example, we keep going back to, there's no way that we could have people shoulder to shoulder watching a parade. So we, we flip that around. But there are ways like within the chain of parks that we've talked about before, that people could have to register online ahead of time, you know, sign up to get a ticket, that we could limit those crowds to something that's more manageable, like the size crowds that you're seeing with the downtown farmer's market, which has been back up and running on Saturdays where they've had, they've reduced the number of vendors that they have in place. They've spaced them out strategically. They have required mask use and certainly the number of people that would attend that type of, of, you know, a farmer's market is much less than would attend something like Springtime Tallahassee. So those are the kind of models that we would look at. We would look at the ways that we've modified the, the sporting events similar to how we've done in our leagues and then look at the things we've seen that have worked with other events in the community as well. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, somewhat. I, I guess, do you have a threshold in mind internally of how many people an event gets, supplies an, an action plan and it's going to attract 1,000 people or 3,000 people or 10,000 people? Is there a cutoff in, in the staff level of thinking, no, we're not going to do an event that size? Or do we need to say if an event that's going to get bigger than XYZ, it needs to come back for a vote?
Oh, Ashley, maybe this will be helpful because I know Ashley's been talking directly with the events and they've got some good plans and thoughts already. Would, would one of the events at, at Cascades Park maybe a good example of the potential capacity there? And then how much we're talking about would be COVID safe?
So like an event in the amphitheater, the amphitheater has a seating capacity of 3,000 people. So if we went through there and, you know, looked at spacing people out and, you know, sitting far, far apart, six feet apart in the seats, spacing people out in the lawn, you might really only be able to get a quarter of that capacity, for example. And then there's other areas within the park where some of these events will have stages and have activities going. We would look specifically at that space and say, okay, if we literally, you know, took a diagram of this and spaced people out, you know, six feet, how many people do we think we could safely get in that area? So it would, it's very difficult to put a number on like no more than this many or that many because each of the spaces is different and the, the events that might be held indoors are obviously different than the events that would be held outdoors. And it's, it's really very situational to what's going on, where it is and, and how the crowd would be expected to, you know, enter the venue, exit the venue and what they'd be doing while they're there. And I apologize for being very general about it, but it really is very, it, it's very difficult to give you a, you know, a specific answer when each of the circumstances are so very different. And I think that we would have to work individually, individually with each of those groups in their particular locations and activities to determine what would work safely.
Add to this, so what Ashley's talking about too is the evaluation. Clearly Ashley's team would be instrumental in that evaluation, but we also would take advantage of our HR safety specialists and other departments. So it would not be limited to Parks and Recreation. We'd bring some other expertise in. We did that when the governor deferred some approvals to the local levels. There were things that we had to sign off on and we used that kind of cross-functional team, truly people that are experts in their field. And so we would do the same here and rely upon them to, you know, evaluate to the best of our ability, you know, whether we thought something was reasonably safe.
Okay. And has there been an indication from Springtime Tallahassee specifically, how, how they would like to have a parade, if they're not going to do the parade function or, or that sort of thing?
Commissioner, we had initial conversations with them about their event and the possibility of their event, and we did discuss the reverse parade option. They were going to kind of wait and see, I think, how things progressed with the reverse parade that we're doing next week and just to kind of see how things were in general. And we have not had a further follow-up with them as to what their current thinking is or how they may choose to proceed with their parade.
And, and just to, I guess, last question on that. So, I mean, it wouldn't be our, it wouldn't be our position that we're going to open up the sidewalks downtown and people can free flow, walk around and however many people show up, show up. Is that?
I, I don't think so. And I'm going to look to Ashley again, and I, I know Ashley and her team have really been involved. There is, and I'm going to call, call the particular event out, but the Chain of Parks Art Festival hosted by LeMoyne, I think that's a great example that there's a lot of space, it's well-attended, it's a destination type event. And I know there's been a fair amount of discussion about this. Ashley, do we use that as an example of what we might think modifications would be?
Yes, sir. And we would, we definitely would not think that it would be safe or a plan that we would recommend approving to just allow anybody that wants to come, show up, show up because we would not be able to know how many people were coming or how many people would try to fit into a space. So that's, that's a plan that we would not feel comfortable recommending approval of. One of the things that LeMoyne has suggested though is obviously limiting the number of, of artists that they would have in the chain of parks so that they could space out even further and then doing some, you know, some strategic calculations to figure out how many people would we all feel comfortable with walking through that area that would, you know, be similar to some of the, the, you know, walking through Walmart or walking through Publix where it wouldn't, you wouldn't have people right up on top of each other like you can see in some of these past events where there just can be shoulder to shoulder, wall to wall people. So we would come up with a, a number of people to enter this area, you know, for each hour and they would have to sign up online ahead of time to enter the park at, at a certain timeframe. They would have a ticket or some other way to identify themselves as they came through a gate area. And again, this would not be a ticket that would cost any money, it would still be free and open to the public. We would just have to limit the amount of attendance. They've also talked about, and other events have similar ways of doing this too, that in addition to some of the on-person, in-person things that they might do, they might also have some virtual options. So they may have opportunities for people to still be able to, to view some of the art virtually, to be able to shop virtually. The Red Hill Horse Trials, for example, has, has had conversations about potentially being able to live stream their event, the Challenger Tennis Tournament as looking into being able to live stream their event. So there's ways that we would still be able to provide public access that would not necessarily mean it would be everybody that is usually downtown or in these other venues coming downtown and certainly not at the same time. That, that, that would not be an option that we would feel comfortable with.
Uh, uh, thank you. And I guess if you could keep us updated as, as organizations decide what they may even be considering, you know, I, I agree, I wouldn't want to just give a stamp of approval not knowing where we're going. But I mean, the reality on the ground is when we opened up sporting events, we were at 5%. Now we're over 10% positivity rate. What we're doing right now is not working. We're, we're going up. We need people in our community to take a step back, go back to maybe what we were doing last March and only go out if you really need to, just until we get more people vaccinated and we get to that 60% that Commissioner Richardson's talking about. Because I mean, the finish line is right there and I don't want to see people in our community die because we're rushing back to business when we can just wait a few more months and, and really save lives. So I, it's, I appreciate all the thought, Ashley, that you're, you're putting into this. I know you, you share the concerns and I, you know, it's clear that, you know, it's not your prerogative to let people, you know, free fall into our city properties and have tens of thousands of people. So I really do appreciate that clarity. I understand the concerns of restlessness. I have a six-year-old and a two-year-old and, and I get it. We, we want to get out, we want to travel, we want to go to parks, we want to play. And it's difficult. It's been difficult for everybody, you know, I mean, depression in our communities, we've seen suicide rates. I understand wholeheartedly the, the issues that we're, we're facing, but what we can do as a community to come together and just make it these next few months, I think, is just an imperative. And I hope all of the people in our community and our event organizers will, will share that goal and, and work with us to keep our community safe. The next, a couple more points. We talked a lot about broadband, access to broadband is in our strategic plan. We saw that really, that need really heightened with a lot, a lot of our school students during the pandemic who didn't have access to internet connectivity. So I know our strategic plan speaks to whether the infrastructure is in place, but I think we also need to look at, do people in low-income communities have access to it? Are they able to afford it? Are they able to get connected for things like school and work as we move forward? And one final point, and a little sensitive. Mr. Mayor, it seems during the last year, we've switched to WebEx. We had a lot of new commissioners and we kind of moved to this one where a lot of times to keep the meetings moving, a motion will be made or you'll hand a motion to someone to keep the meeting, the perfunctory decision's going. And it would just be my preference if we stick to letting the commissioner make a motion specifically just for, for the record.
I'll take that under consideration.
Well, you know, alternatively, I think we, we maybe need to look to a more formal rules of order, following Robert's rules of order, if, if we can collegially decide.
I will have a conversation.
I will have a conversation with city attorney and we'll report back at the next commission.
Talk about it then. And, yeah, and the last point, just to address some of our public speakers, I think Ben did a great job talking about making these loan programs available to more people and that sort of thing. And I just think we need to look at that direction of people, as we try to invest in the South Side and we try to invest in Frenchtown, our largest-scale developers probably aren't coming, but our community-based people who are already there and want some help, maybe don't currently have all the criteria that we're looking for. How do we enable more minority-owned, community-based developers to build in the community? I think if we kind of take the lead on that focus, I'm not talking about one person or two people. How do we get a dozen people? How do we get two dozen people who want to help us with this housing goal in Frenchtown and the South Side? I think that would go a long way to getting our numbers up and where we need to go. Thank you.
Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I tell you, we've had a robust conversation here this afternoon. I don't have a whole lot more to add, but just a few comments and hopefully will be brief. I, first of all, I want to commend you, city manager, and your leadership team and all of the staff with the City of Tallahassee. I am extremely pleased with the job that you all are doing to move this city forward. I think when we compare ourselves to comparable cities, we're right there at the top. And that's why twice we have been named an All-America City. We are doing things that I think other cities want to or should emulate in order to be where we are at this point in time. Are we perfect? We certainly aren't. But if you find a perfect city, let me know where it is, because I might want to move there. But if you can't identify one for me, I'm going to stay right here in the city of Tallahassee where I've lived for over 40 years now. And I'm proud to be a South Side resident. As I mentioned, my wife and I chose to build our home on the South Side. And we've been in our neighborhood now for 30 years. And prior to that, I rented property on the South Side of town in the same neighborhood where I built my home. And I'm sure that Commissioner Williams-Cox will tell you that she and her family, we, you know, we feel good about where we live. Do we have some challenges? Certainly we do. And I think that we are well on our way to addressing those challenges. And what we've heard today from this commission, it won't be another 30 years. It won't be another 20 years. I think within the next 10 years, we're going to see very significant progress in improving the South Side of our city and making all of our residents, regardless of where they live, feel like they are a part of an All-America city. I feel that we're on our way there. But we've got, we've still got some work to do. But I think this commission, I not think, I know that this commission, our city manager, his leadership team and staff are committed to working with us and the community to making that happen. And Darryl has left, but one of the things I want to emphasize that he mentioned earlier is community involvement. Government can't do this alone. You know, we've talked about in the impact on poverty to be a leading community partner. And that's what this is all about, is partnerships. We don't have the money. You know, I was here when we had to wrestle with trying to raise taxes here locally when I first came to the commission. That was hellacious. We caught hell over that and it wasn't that much of an increase. And so we certainly don't have the resources to do all of this, especially in this COVID environment. And so we have to have partners that are going to work with us, both with the fiscal resources and the human resources to get these things accomplished. And I think this community will do that. We have demonstrated that time and time again, especially as we make the commitment to improve conditions all over our community, but certainly in those areas that have been neglected during the years. But I, I feel real good about where I live, you know, and, and, Jesus, I hate to say this, but during the Christmas holidays, my car was burglarized twice. I think we've got some little kids that come through our neighborhood and if you make the mistake of leaving your car unlocked, Mr. Williams-Cox, they, they went in it. They didn't, they didn't steal. I had nothing of value in the car. They didn't vandalize my car, but it was frustrating. But I think it's some little kids that walk through our neighborhood and if you're one of the unfortunate ones. But I say that to say this, we have to empower our neighborhoods to also be involved in improving themselves. We, we can't go in with grand plans and say that government is going to change the quality of life or conditions in a neighborhood. Neighborhoods themselves have to take some responsibility as, as Darryl mentioned. We've got to clean up our neighborhoods. We've got to keep up our homes. We've got to look out for each other. We've got to have the crime watch program set up in our neighborhoods and take a leadership role in that. We've got to partner with the police in identifying crime and criminals in our communities, in our neighborhoods. That's the responsibility that we have to take in partnership with, with our local governments, both city and county. And so I wanted to make that point. And one thing that the South City Foundation is doing in that regard is partnering with South Side neighborhoods, again, to empower us, to get us organized. They've even provided some financial resources. We got, my neighborhood, among some others, got a $1,000 grant from the South City Foundation for improvements to our neighborhood based on what we want, not what we're told to do, but based on what we want to see done to improve our own neighborhood. That was for fiscal year 20 and will be eligible for another one, among other neighborhoods as well, specifically on the South Side of town in fiscal year 21. So we may want to consider partnering with the South City Foundation, Mr. Manager, in that regard, our Neighborhood Affairs Department, to see what they're doing and how we can partner. And by the way, your Neighborhood Affairs staff is phenomenal. They, they really are doing a fantastic job for us and I appreciate them in many respects. So that, that, that addresses some of the neighborhood issues. With respect to poverty, Commissioner Matlow, you were spot on. Again, there are so many variables that impact poverty. There's no way that we could have, as a city, as a local government, could have the resources to, to, to set a goal of reducing poverty in and of ourselves. We just can't do it because there are so many variables that contribute to that. But as a partner, as a leading partner, we can take some responsibility for that with our other social service providers as well. Now, I know we, you know, Commissioner Proctor had taken the leadership in looking at specifically at the 32304 zip code. And Bart Bibler since then has, has taken, I think, a leadership role in advancing some of the initiatives that came out of that. And so as the city manager, I would hope that we would look at what Bart is proposing and maybe see if we can incorporate some of that into our strategic plan. And I know he's looking for, gosh, I forgot what he calls it, some type of leadership team, though, a partnership where a collective comes together and there's someone that would lead that and move us forward in addressing the issue of poverty in our community and setting specific percentage goals. But it, but that has to be addressed through a partnership. Again, I don't want us to set up a situation where people are thinking that the city of Tallahassee is going to reduce poverty in our community when we just, we can't, we couldn't do it even if we had trillions of dollars because there is so much else that contributes to that. Just a couple of other things. The public safety, deputy chief, I want to thank you all for what you all are doing at the Tallahassee Police Department to keep our community safe. Again, it's got to be a partnership. We cannot police our way out of crime in our community. I'm sad to say that as of this day, there was a 16-year-old shot and killed at the, on the church grounds at the church that my family and I attend, that's right next to my house. That murder has yet to be solved. And do you know why? Because people who know what happened won't come forward and necessarily talk about who did it and why. And that, that's inexcusable. That's unconscionable. But we, but we've got to partner with our local law enforcement agencies in that way if we're going to seriously address crime in our community. And it's already started here in 2021. We've had already, what, two murders, several shootings, couple of homicides here in 2021. So we've got to partner with our public safety professionals in that respect. And Commissioner Williams-Cox, thank you for your questioning on the police department budget because I think what has been, what has been created is a false narrative nationwide that all of this money is being put into the police department budget to the detriment of other areas of need in the city. And that is far from the case. I, I can't speak for any other city, but I know that that is the case here in the city of Tallahassee. And we just haven't done a good enough job of communicating that to our public. And I'm glad that you brought that up and had the chief address that. And maybe that's something, Mr. City Manager, we can do on a more frequent basis so that our community is informed on how monies are being spent. It's not being spent to gear up the police department for militarization, purchasing guns and other equipment like that simply for enforcement. I think that would be, be beneficial. And then lastly, again, I agree with Commissioner Matlow on the CLEO, the Climate Action Resolution that we were asked to consider. I've met with those young people and I was extremely impressed by them and what they brought forward and the kind of thought that they have put into, because it's their future that we're talking about. And here they are concerned about their own futures. A young lady, I think she was a 17-year-old, talking about her children and grandchildren. I'm like, oh my God. I probably will be around to see her grandchildren. But they have already, they realize the, the impact that we have on our climate and what's that, what that's going to mean for them in the years to come. And so I would like to see us at least, I haven't seen the resolution. They told me they were going to send me the language. I haven't gotten it yet, but I'd like to see us at least consider that and see if it's something that, as a municipality, we can, we can support. So, Mr. Mayor, that ends my comments. I think this has been a wonderful retreat. We've learned a lot and we've set some direction for ourselves and I'm just looking forward to moving forward.
Great. Fantastic. I have a couple of comments. And, Mr. Manager, I'm going to come back to you to walk us through some staff recommendations that we could take, take some votes on. First of all, I'd like to say how much I appreciate all of the appointments in your teams. If you think about a year ago from this event, little did we know that we would be facing a global pandemic, that we would be facing as a society and as a community, the social injustice issues that we continue to work on, also brought about protests in our streets, a recession, the most active hurricane season in the history of the Gulf of Mexico, on top of probably the most divisive presidential election in modern time. It, it has been a trying year. But even through a trying year, boy, this organization and city has risen to the occasion, not only for employees, but also for citizens. Real proud to be the mayor of this great city. No doubt about it. Jim, you and your team have done a tremendous job of switching over the public comment to include both calling in in virtual, I mean, I know that this was new to you and your team, be able to incorporate and make sure we do it legally. And you've done a great job and I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Like everything else around here, it takes a team effort, everybody from direction from the city attorney to the communications folks, to the technology innovation folks who are making things work. But I appreciate it and, and share the thanks with the rest of the team.
Dennis, you have done a tremendous job in your first year's office of completely transforming your office into a 21st century inspector general's office. I think it is a model across the United States and I'm real proud to be working with you on, on this venture.
Thank you. I think it shows the city's overall commitment to transparency and accountability.
Cassandra, you have done a fantastic job during some very unprecedented times, which I'm sure has challenged you and your entire legal team with questions that you never thought you would be dealing with over the past year. And, and I really, really do appreciate it. I love working with you from a legal standpoint, but also from a parliamentarian. I know that you'll keep me straight and make sure we do everything by the book and legit. And I've got a perfect record thus far. So we'll continue to work and evolve and make sure that we serve and do well with the people's business. But thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my pleasure to serve the citizens of the, of the city of Tallahassee and certainly each of you individually. I think each of you, as I've said before, bring something very important to the city, the various perspectives, which help us really to do the good work that we need to do for the city. So I'm grateful for this opportunity. I'm grateful for your confidence of each of you.
Reese, you know, I have the utmost respect for you and your team and the entire city of Tallahassee staff that works under your management. You all are creative. You are leaders. You are driven to serve the citizens. And you personally have done a great job as our city manager and I appreciate that. I thoroughly enjoy working with you and your team each and every day.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I really appreciate working with each of you. Actually, the city attorney said excellent. I think, I think together we bring the ingredients necessary to have, have good outcomes. And I appreciate the opportunity to say this. And I will tell you that I am so appreciative of our leadership team. You saw evidence of that today. They jumped in. They answered the questions. They are true experts and true public servants. And my hat's off to them and all the city employees. So much gratitude for what they've done. This past year has been tough. We know that. And we probably could have done without the summary of this last year, Mr. Mayor. I think we're ready to move on.
Yeah.
That was not a fun year, was it? But thank you, sir.
Absolutely. So moving forward, we do have a lot of work to do to build upon our success. Let me tell you what's going to be on my radar and what we'll be working on in the office of the mayor. And I look forward to working with each and every one of my colleagues on these issues as well. And I'm not going to belabor the point because many of them have been repeated. Violent crime will continue to be an issue that we need to deal with more immediately, as well as the health, safety and welfare in regards to our COVID response here in our community and how we do move forward as well. Access to fruits, vegetables, food, our food desert issues is something that we need to double down on and work extremely hard to solve. Economic development should continue to be one of our priorities so that we can provide incredible jobs, expand our local market and be able to provide great opportunities, which is a key component to lifting people out of poverty. Affordable housing is going to be a huge priority for me. And I'm going to challenge you. I'm going to push you and colleagues, you as well, myself and my team. We are going to have to think bigger and bigger and better if we're truly going to make a dent when it comes to affordable and low-income housing. We are not going to build our way out of this problem by building 19 or 20 houses a year. We have got to become more creative. And number one, how do we add affordable housing stock in our community? This comes down to permitting. This comes down to finding great partners all over the community that's willing to participate. But it's also looking at the fact that a single-family detached house is not the only solution to homeownership. We need to think creatively about how we move forward to bring stock on into the market. You know, I mentioned this the other day as well. City beautification is still a big issue to me. And I want to redouble our efforts cleaning our city, taking care of business so that it's something, all aspects, all roads. taking care of business so that it's something, all aspects, all roads, sidewalks, that we can be proud of. As simple as picking up trash to how we deal with graffiti, broken windows, abandoned houses. It's been kicked around ideas of how we place fines and liens and code enforcement. And we got great men and women that work in those departments. But I look forward to carrying on this conversation as well. Now, three things specifically to bring to the table today. Number one, I had a great conversation with the ATN regarding Midtown. And I am really looking forward to moving forward with Midtown and the great plans that we have in place. Now, when I had the conversation yesterday, I was not aware because the agenda hasn't come out. But it's my understanding that there's actually an agenda item coming at our next city commission meeting on Midtown with the placemakers.
Yes, and it has been COVID delayed for sure. But at your direction, Midtown Working Group was established. Staff met with them, worked with them, got a lot of input, and that presentation has been ready. It will be on your next agenda on January 27th to hear the recommendations of that group. We're looking forward to it. Again, that has been COVID delayed, no doubt about it. They wanted to make sure they had an in-person audience, and we're going to get it to the commission next meeting.
Well, I look forward to hearing what the working group has been working on. I intended to come today to offer up a series of motions. I'm not going to do that because I'd rather wait to hear what the citizens have been working on and what they have presented to make sure that we stay in line. But I think it is an amazing opportunity to be able to move forward, and there's a lot of excitement out there in the public. Once in a blue moon, commissioners, I know you understand. You get some really good ideas that come from all different aspects of the community. I do want to highlight one that I think this would be an incredibly fun project, Mr. Manager, working with you and your team. A sixth grader reached out to me, Charlie McKenna, that had a great idea that as we move forward with our parks and as we replant, we should replant fruit trees that will blossom and grow. And, you know, if you're in Tom Brown Park, it happens to be a tangerine tree or satsuma tree that's available or wherever you are. Now, I know we're doing this in the Greater Vine neighborhood with the Linear Park. I believe that we're going to be planting some fruit trees. But I think it'd be a great idea to explore that as we move forward with the planting of trees, not just in our parks, but where appropriate on right-ofways, sidewalk areas. And we do explore also planting flowering, more flowering trees, but also fruit trees as well.
That's a great idea.
Finally, when it comes to an issue that we are going to vote on with the event recommendation, I am comfortable with staff recommendation. And let me tell you where we are. I don't have a problem moving forward with the planning of the events because, look, if it ever gets to the point that we're not comfortable, we can always pull the plug. But for a lot of these events, they got deadlines. The Word of South, they got to book their acts now. If we do not move, unless this commission is just dead set against anything, yeah, pull the plug now. But I feel comfortable moving forward, working with these organizations to put together a plan in place that can be safe for the community. We are giving out the vaccinations. I personally don't know what this community will look like come late March or early October, early April. I also know that this commission is not afraid to say, yeah, no, we're not going to move forward with this. We don't feel comfortable later. But for the purposes of planning and working with the community, I'm comfortable with the recommendation that's coming before us, and I intend to support it as well. Those are my comments. So, Commissioner Matlow, I hear you loud and clear. I will respect your word. You know, I won't go to you. A lot of times, we have the non-controversial or it's the consent agenda. In lack of anybody saying anything, I will just automatically say, Commissioner Richardson will sponsor the motion. If you have, if I do that and you do not want to sponsor or second it, please let me know. But I'll be sure, respect your words, of course. So with that, those are my comments. Mr. City Manager, if you want to walk us through.
We're going to put it up on the screen here. Mr. Mayor, I think we've captured what you've discussed that would need action today.
Okay, proposed action.
Can y'all see that? I'm going to, you can see it? I'm impressed, Commissioner Richardson.
Also not eligible for a vaccine.
Mayor, and you can take these individually. I think that probably may suit you well. But there has been discussion. The question is whether we move forward with special events with appropriate COVID plans. That's one action. The other is to develop a communications plan for vaccine distribution to reach the entire community. I would like to bring more details on that. Third is to rename the Southern Strategy Area, the SSA today, that's the name, to the Southside Action Plan. And of course, you need the concurrence of the Leon County Board of Commissioners since it's part of the comprehensive plan.
Sure.
It impacts unincorporated area. And then finally, appoint Commissioner Williams-Cox as the lead commissioner on the updates for the Southside Action Plan or, yeah, the newly named Southside Action Plan. And I believe that captures all the action items you identified during the discussion.
I have not heard any ascension on two, three, and four, so we can deal with that and say, let's go with number one. I'll recognize Commissioner Williams-Cox, item number one.
I offer the motion that we do move forward. We accept the proposal, actually, we move forward with the special events with appropriate COVID-19 plans.
Second.
Commissioner Williams-Cox, move staff's recommendation of item number one, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. See no further. Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you. So how would this play out, Mr. City Manager? When these event plans come back, when will we hear about them? What's the deadline for a plan to come before an event? The mayor spoke to people needing to book events. They should be pretty far down the line of what their plan is, I would assume. Do you have any indication of where to south, Springtown, Tallahassee, where their plans at? How soon it would come out?
I think just out of necessity, they've got to finalize their plans. And there's been early conversation with our Parks and Recreation Department. And part of the reason we're asking you today is because they're saying, hey, I've got to commit or not commit. So I would think in the next several weeks, we would know whether there was an acceptable plan. As soon as we have one, I'd be happy to share it with all of y'all. I do trust that our experts, they'll be sensitive. They're not going to agree to things that we think would be reckless. Trust them, and I can send it to y'all when we get it. But I think the next couple of weeks would be our timeline for knowing what the plans are and whether they're acceptable or not.
And if I could add on point, you're right, the rate is up now. But we just came off of holiday travel for a lot of people. So I'm fully expecting that things are all going to get better. We've just got to go through this period of right after holiday because people, even though we were, folks were advised not to travel, they did. And so that's, I think what we're seeing is the remnants of that. And also, I sit on the Tourist Development Council, and Word of South, I know, is one of those events and some of their other events that they're having to deal with as well. And so having these early plans and also having that checkpoint as well. I know that they had to cancel last year, but TDC is really in some steps in the middle there to see what happens. Because when they cancel, it could also cost money from the TDC. So we're going to be very fiscally responsible to make sure that as we step down this path, that we're going to do everything we can to do what's best in the best interest of taxpayer dollars.
Motion is on the table for recommended action number one, made by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Mayor, pro temp.
Yeah, just out of curiosity, I mean, is there any objection to having the plans come back for affirmation by the city commission? I guess my biggest objection is it's, to your point, we don't know where the numbers are going to be, when the plans will be, when staff is making the decisions. And ultimately, that burden falls on our shoulders. And without giving that final say, I mean, I agree, we could bring it back and say, I think we need to reverse course. But I think if we're sending a path or a process, yes, I do think we should move forward with the events if there's a safe way to do it. But just in the circumstances we are, I mean, essentially, what could be considered a life-or-death decision, I'd like to have one, not put that weight on your shoulders, keep it on our shoulders. That's the final decision-maker, but really just have clarity of what we are approving because I don't want to be liable for something down the road if circumstances change. So I mean, would there be an objection to let staff go ahead and move forward, negotiate these plans, and just bring them back for a consent vote? With no objection.
First of all, I want to go to the attorney. There's no liability on our part because it's not actually our events, correct? What technically what we would be approving is the issuing of a permit, whether it be in the park or to do the parade. Now, obviously, if we don't issue the permit, that basically puts the end to it. But let's be clear, there's no liability on behalf of the city because it's not our event per se.
That is correct. And our permits, and we have requirements, insurance requirements, no liability provisions and indemnification provisions. So we're covered on that score.
Got it. Let me come to City Manager and Commissioner Richardson.
Well, I was just going to say, from an organizational perspective, you know, if I had done everything that was asked of me to have this event, and then you tell me, well, staff recommends it, but now it's got to go to the commission for final approval, you know, where does that put them, Commissioner Matlow? You know, when possibly, you know, they put time and resources, fiscal resources into planning for these events. I would be skeptical as an organization to go through a process like that.
Mr. Manager? I don't see that as being an issue, bringing it back, other than timing. I'm a little worried about the timing. Just looking at the calendar, your next meeting is on January 27th. You know, we issued the material in advance. I don't think that is adequate time for the plans to be received and approved. So that puts us into February. I'm worried about the timing. I don't have a perfect feel for that. That's my reaction to it. You know, certainly if I sent it to you and you had an objection, you had grave concerns, I could add it to the agenda, but it would certainly follow your will. Whatever you're comfortable with, timing will come into play. So I think February 10th, so you've got a meeting on the 27th of January. You've got a meeting on February 10th. After that, certainly probably gets a little late. And then I probably, I would recommend if you wanted to do that, I would probably limit that to your larger cosponsored events. Those more significant events will be, you know, other smaller ones. I think that probably would not be as significant. And it will certainly, you know, we'll accommodate whatever you feel comfortable in.
I'm ready to move forward and support the motion.
I think, I think too, if it would help Commissioner Matlow and others who may have concerns, if in those appropriate COVID-19 plans, if they included something about if the numbers, if the numbers increased over a period of time, then, you know, it would be a decision of go or no-go based on that. Or if the numbers, we see them trending downward, then, you know, the decision could be made to go. But to set sometime, some type of a bar in those COVID-19 plans, whether they can, they will make a decision to go or no-go.
Mr. Mayor, if I could comment on that, I think we absolutely have to preserve our ability to revoke the approval if conditions worsen.
Sure.
I think this is all subject to change.
Yeah, absolutely. We reserve the right to revoke it up until a week before.
I, that would, you know, that would be my direction to staff. And that's got to be included in the approval of the plan because things could, you know, it just wouldn't be appropriate if they worsened. Maybe I'm being optimistic that I hope they approve. But we do need to preserve that condition.
And, you know, we're assuming too that these organizations, Mr. Mayor, aren't going to be sensitive to these same issues. They're not going to put their membership, and I wouldn't, I would hope not, that, you know, they wouldn't be so callous as to say, you know, we've got a 20% rate, just hypothetically, but we're still going to go forward with, you know, the Chain of Parks event or the Asian Festival. I wouldn't think that, but.
Well, I'm wondering if.
Commissioner Porter.
Thank you. If, you know, on the one hand, they understand the risk of planning these events and that we reserve that right at any point. And what we approved today is not approving the events, it's moving forward with the permitting process. Do you think, Mr. Manager, that two weeks is enough time for these major? I mean, because my concern is really the really big events, like when we're talking about thousands of people and the tourist attraction and people from outside of our city. Do we not think that two weeks is enough for them to come up with? I mean, because I know that they've been planning this for months, I'm sure. I know that it's changing every day. Do we not feel like that is enough time for, at least if we want a threshold of above this many expected participants? Because I know they know that.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, let me ask, I'm sure Ashley Edwards is still on the line. I can't answer that, but she might be able to take a stab at it and see if she thinks. Now, of course, we would potentially submit that information outside of the normal agenda process, which is a week in advance. So that's a week away. So if we could take the full time, Ashley, with two weeks, do we think the plans would be readily available and approvable within two weeks of the significant events?
Yes, sir, I do. I think for the significant events that are coming up in the next few months in the spring, obviously, some of those cosponsored events won't take place until next fall. But for the ones that are coming up here in the next few months, I do feel like we could get a pretty good handle on their plans because we have had conversations with them. And I do think we could have enough information to be able to, you know, provide sufficient information to the commission in the next two weeks.
Okay. So, okay. So are we talking about postponing action for two weeks? Moving with the motion.
No, actually, I think the motion actually still is adequate. So, but it would be city commission approval. So we would say that special events can move forward with a COVID, appropriate COVID plan. A condition of that would be staff's review and recommendation, city commission approval on January 27th. I think the action is fine.
Does that work?
Yes.
All right. All those in favor, the motion on table, signify by saying aye. All those opposed. Passes unanimously, five zero, item number two. Anybody have a problem with developing the communications plan for the vaccine?
Move item number, could that include Mr. City Manager transportation if we're able to, as I mentioned earlier?
Absolutely. Thank you for saying that. Raul has told me they're already underway with the plan, and we will include that as well. Thank you.
All right. I'd move item number two, Mr. Mayor.
Properly moved, item number two, by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox. See no further comment. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those opposed. Passes unanimously, five zero. Commissioner Williams-Cox, will you leave this on number three, please?
Absolutely. I move that we rename formerly known as SSA to SAP.
Commissioner, you're the one that originally brought this.
I seconded the motion. I was going to give it to Commissioner Porter.
Oh, I was going to give it to you, so.
Feeling generous. Properly moved by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Are there any objections? See, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. Item number four, Commissioner Richardson, I'll come to you for comment.
Oh, absolutely. I move that we appoint Commissioner Williams-Cox as the commissioner on the updates to the Southside Action Plan.
Commissioner Porter.
So I'm happy to support this. I'm just curious what this, what this really entails. Mr. Manager, or whatever. Okay, okay.
I can tell you what I had in mind is that I will be, like I said, on other committees. I will be the representative at these, all of the different meetings or where we need input or we need to go and bring, get that information and bring it back to the commission. That doesn't preclude staff bringing updates. That doesn't preclude that at all. I'm just there like I am on many other committees to bring back the information and to represent us there. So that all of us, because all of us can't go to the same place at the same time. So I'll be on point.
Wonderful. It's been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Porter. See no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. Is there any other business to come before the commission at this retreat?
Not, not business, but let me give a point of clarification if I could. Commissioner Porter mentioned about some things that she'd like to see different in the strategic plan. I think we all have it. I wanted to make sure that she understood that the staff didn't come up with the strategic plan. We did. We came up with it, and Dr. Elaine Bryant, who is a renowned professional strategic planner and does it as consulting, worked very closely with staff to make sure that what we had is measurable, that's monitored, and all of those kinds of things. So there has been some expert. So there has been some expert consulting done at no cost to, to get the strategic plan where it is. Now, we want to make some tweaks and changes to it. That's fine, but I just wanted to make sure you knew that the staff didn't come up with this. We, we four remaining are responsible for it, and so if something needs to be changed then, hold us accountable, hold us responsible for it. I just wanted, wanted to mention that.
Yeah. Seeing no further comment, we stand adjourned. Excellent retreat today. Thank you all very much.